We will call the order, I'll call the order of the Mammell Planning Commission Regular Meeting here for February 22nd, 2024, 6:30 PM, City Hall. We have announcements, Mr. Germer, Mr. Lyon.
I will handle it, thank you. Staff reviewed items, we have a repli of lot 374R, CCA, that's under review and actually headed towards filing fairly quickly, that's 136 Marseille. The Hillside Putting Course Site Plan is under review, as you know, of course, there's a conditional use that's being deferred tonight, but the site plan itself is a staff-level review. The Valley Creek Sub, or I believe it's Valley Heights, Sub has been filed. And then, as far as general announcements, we welcome two new planning commissioners, Alice Volk, John Jones. We apologize on the, your cards, we'll get them next month with the, with the change in board, we'll have everybody updated next month, okay? Thank y'all for the appointments and joining our crew. And then, finally, election of officers is needed tonight, and that's all.
Very good, very good. So we've got Secretary, correct, Vice Chair and this here, this is three.
And Trager.
Trager, okay. We gotta write it all down. I'll probably, perhaps.
I'm sorry. Secretary, not Trager, Secretary, Vice Chair and this here.
Yeah, I thought there was a Trager.
No, Trager. We have no money.
Okay, we have no money, we don't ever receive any money, our compensation for our, for our duties. Okay, so we'll, we'll start with, and the pleasure, of course, is the commission, but we'll, we'll start with Secretary and then we'll work our way up. Mr. Ramsey is absent tonight, he, he did say he'd be welcome to take that on as another year if you, if you so elected, so he, he had no remorse of his absence and us invoking him in to repeat that tenure, should, should you deem that appropriate. So, I just wanted to say that, that he passed that long. So we'll open up the nominations for Secretary, and do I hear a motion for appointment?
I'll make a motion to nominate Hall Ramsey back to Secretary position.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Any other, any other nominations? Okay, so all those in favor of Hall Ramsey being appointed as Secretary of Planning Commission for year 2024, signify by saying yes, yes?
Yes.
All those no, same. Motion carries for Secretary Hall Ramsey, so now we will entertain motions for Vice Chair. So, and I'd like to make a motion here for Mr. Gill, for, for Vice Chair for 2024.
Second.
Right here, first and a second, any other nominations? Okay, I don't know if I need a motion to close nominations, but anyway, we'll, we'll close nominations and, and take the vote for Tracy on Vice Chair, all those in support signify by saying yes?
Yes.
All those no, motion carries, congratulations, Vice Chair, Gill. We'll open up nominations for Chair. I'm not gonna nominate myself.
I'll nominate, I'll nominate Craig for Chairman again.
I told, thank you, so here in a second?
A second.
Okay, here in a first and a second, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
All those no, same sign, motion carries, congratulations to me. So I've got, I do have one more year, and this will probably be my last year, I think I've served 21 or so years here, so just let anybody know that's just clamoring for the position next year. Politicking may need to start a little early, so we'll move on with our agenda for this evening. Our first action this evening is the approval of minutes of, of January 25th, 2024. I do have a couple of corrections on page two, we need to put in there 40-foot access and a 15-foot public access, that's under proposed preliminary plat for take-pipe oil. I'll just give these to Mr. Lyon to, to simplify things, you're worried about keeping up. And then, on page three, the motion should be land, commercial building design rather than landscape plan. Any other changes? Chair, I want to hear a motion.
Make a motion to accept the minutes as.
With, with Commissioner comments?
Second.
Here in a first and a second, all those in favor of the approval minutes of January 25th, 2024, signify by saying yes?
Yes.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. So we've got public comments on non-agenda items, we do have three comments this evening, the best I can tell here, they are all on agenda items, so we will wait and hear those at the appropriate time, moving through our business this evening. So, with a public hearing open, we will now hear the old business items first. So we have S U B 24-1, C U S C 24-1, for the Stony Mountain subdivision, this is proposed 244 lot subdivision, the Mammell ETJ, and conditional use permit to allow small lot, single-family development. So we've got Roy is here, the applicant's representative's here, we will hear two items, we will take them separately. First item is the proposed conditional use permit, who's handling this for staff?
Mr. Chair, I will be handling that.
Very good.
And before we get started, I would probably entertain, and City Attorney, correct me if I'm wrong, should we move the Master Street Plan item from new business up to old business, since it's going to probably need to be discussed as part of this proposal coming in with the subdivision?
Mr. Chair, my understanding is that they're all contingent on each other.
Understood.
Which we could.
It does make sense to discuss them all.
At once.
Or in whatever order, but just moving that new business item up to immediately following these, these two items.
Okay. Is this item correct? Are you asking that's gonna push on now? Okay, so what I need is a motion to move item number, see here, in a new business for item number one, the Master Street Plan Amendment, would you, I, I guess we're gonna move this up to item two, right? So to contingency, Mr. Turner? Okay. So I need a motion to amend the agenda this evening for item number one under new business for the Master Street Plan Amendment, and we will move it up to, I guess we'll say 1A, under the business of the Stony Mountain subdivision. I need a motion to that effect.
So moved?
Here, second?
Second.
Here in a first and a second, to remove the new business for the Master Street Plan up from number one in new business to old business as 1A, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
All those no, same. The motion carries and the agenda is so amended, so now we will begin hearing on old business for the Stony Mountain subdivision.
All right, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I want to be a little bit more descriptive in this because we do have residents in the audience that may want a little bit more description on what's going on. You have three items under this, there's a proposed conditional use permit, there's a proposed preliminary plat, and then there's a Master Street Plan. The, the conditional use is a recommendation to City Council, which City Council will either approve or deny. The proposed preliminary plat would stay with the Planning Commission, so you would actually act on that, and it would be approved here or denied. And then the Master Street Plan, again, would be a recommendation that would go to City Council. The purpose for the Master Street Plan Amendment is because the development that is being proposed is also proposing a realignment of the Master Street Plan collectors, so with that, I'm gonna kind of go in under the conditional use on number one, but you're gonna find that I'm gonna be describing and discussing all three of these items at the same time as we move through it. So, you've been given a staff report for both the conditional use request and the subdivision review, so I'm gonna kind of go through those reports and provide that information for you. So the conditional use for the proposed subdivision of Stony Mountain is to allow for a small lot subdivision, which is allowed as a conditional use in an R1 zone. This property is actually in the city's ETJ, which is extraterritorial jurisdiction. The city does not regulate zoning in the county, but we do regulate the subdivision ordinance. The developers are proposing to be annexed into the city as part of this overall development, which is why they're requesting that it be regulated under the R1 standards. There will be, upon that annexation, staff recommendation for the land use, which the land use is gonna be recommended as a single-family detached, which is most, which is the best use in that location. So, on your report, of course, it's recommended R1, the developers have sent development, and basically, kind of a background on this property, this property back in 2007 was introduced to the Planning Commission for approval of a subdivision called Hunter Heights. That subdivision was originally approved by the Planning Commission, but the applicant also requested for a conditional use, or I'm sorry, a waiver for the property, for the street, not to be a collector's street, but to be a local street. The density was approximately 3.78, and based on the development type, as well as the fact that the, the Master Street Plan showed Diamond Point going through this subdivision and connecting directly to Settlement Road, the Planning Commission at the time determined that a collector's status was most appropriate in order to handle the subdivision traffic. Out of that, the developer could not comply in order to move the width of that from 50 feet to 60 feet, which is actually the width of the lot that connects this subdivision to Diamond Point on that boundary. Out of that, he actually sued the city in an attempt, in order to get that overturned, the courts, they found in favor of the city and required the 60-foot collector.
Sir, can I?
Yes, sir.
The Circuit Court agreed with the city, Court of Appeals said he filed his appeal out of time, so the, the courts never had jurisdiction over it, so the whole thing was dismissed and moved, basically.
Thank you for the clarification, Mr. Turner. So, so out of that, this is set since 2007, the parcel that's subject to the proposal, again, remains outside the city. The applicant seeks annexation upon approval of the preliminary plat, and that's a condition of the approval, because the current owner, if it doesn't develop as this, would likely want to stay in the county and not be annexed in, and that's typically how these developments The applicant is seeking this conditional use for small lot design, which is allowed in the R1 zone by conditional use, which restricts building square footage no less than 800 square feet, although in, the applicant is proposing 1,200 square feet as part of the approval of this development. The applicant proposing 1,200, the adjacent subdivision West Point, its bill of assurance has a minimum square footage of 1,0250, so that is comparable to the adjacent residential subdivision. The applicant is seeking a smaller lot design due to their increase in open space percentage from the required 7% to 15% per Section 94162 to the proposed approximate 33%, so they do have a significant amount of green space that they've added in, which is a, a significant difference from the previous proposal back in 2007. The standard R1 regulation allows up to three units per acre for R1, and small lot conditional use allows up to six units per acre. The applicant proposes 3.5 units per acre. Now, the previous proposal back in 2007 was, as I mentioned, 3.78, so this is actually a lower density than what was previously approved by the Planning Commission at that time, but keeping in mind that this now is being proposed as a local road and not a collector road. So that's, staff feels that the small lot and additional half, 0.5 units per acre is a good trade-off for additional green space, which include proposed asphalted walking trails. And right now, on the plat, you'll notice that the walking trails are to be maintained, the common spaces are to be maintained by an improvement district, and that is how it stands now, but the applicant is considering, if the city is willing to accept those trails into the city, could potentially be part of the trail system that is connected to the city's master bike and bed plan. A traffic analysis was conducted by staff for Diamond Point Drive at three locations, that, those traffic documents were provided to you. The first location was at west, west of Apple Blossom Loop, and that had a, the, out of seven days, the one day that had the highest trip count was on a Friday, as well as the other locations. The trip count at location one, one close to Apple Blossom Loop was 1,128 trips. Location two, which was, and keep in mind also that location one is a collector road, it's 60 feet wide. Location two is also a, it's a transition to a collector, and that had a total trip count of 717. And then location three, which is down just to the west of West Point, had a maximum daily trip of 325. In our Master Street Plan, collector roads are designed for up to 5,000 average daily trips, and local streets are designed for traffic up to 2,500 average daily trips. So keep that in mind when we're looking, when we're talking about expected future trip generation from future development. The proposed subdivision proposes a change to the Master Street Plan, removing the collector connection from Diamond Point to Settlement Road. So, Jason, if you wouldn't mind pulling up the existing Master Street Plan. I apologize, I just want to make sure that you're aware of. There we go, right there, right there. That's the Master Street Plan that's shown on your screen and is in your packet as it is today. This was amended back in 2007 in order to have the connection from Diamond Point to connect all the way to Settlement Road, which meant any development to the west of Mammell would collect onto that proposed collector and would either go through Diamond Point or go through Settlement. And those were the concerns of 2007, saying that based on the collection, that, that the developer would have had to have upgraded the existing roadway on Diamond Point to a collector. There's, at Emerald, right now, it stops, from Odom to Emerald, it's a collector, and then from, from Emerald to the end, it's built as a local, but they changed it as a proposed collector. And Jason's kind of going through all the past street plans as it was. So why don't you move over to the proposed street plan that's being realigned based on this proposed subdivision? So based on the proposal, they're recommending that the connection that is on Diamond Point actually be a local road and would not go all the way through, but would end up terminating at a T, turning right, and would deter cut-through traffic on Diamond Point Drive, and then it would connect into a collector in which they are recommending the realignment on the Master Street Plan, connection of a proposed collector from what is currently platted, or it's preliminary platted as Ilya Cove in Pinnacle Heights, which is in the process of being final platted, and connecting to Tracks Road on the north, and then connecting to Settlement. Tracks Road is a private road, it's not a public road, and any future development to the west would require, based on this proposal, upgrade of Tracks Road to a collector status and meet the city's standards in order to accommodate this proposed Master Street Plan Amendment. And that would be left up to future developers if it does develop this way, but based on this proposed subdivision and the Master Street Plan, this subdivision would have two connections to it, one on Diamond Point, and now one on Ilias Cove, which connects to Ridgeland Drive, and Ridgeland is a collector all the way from Odom to Pinnacle Heights and through, so you would have a continuous road that meets the width of collector standards and would be able to manage the higher volumes of, of those, so.
Scott?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Germer, can I ask, do I remember correctly that, this is, so this is the proposed amendment to the Master Street Plan we're seeing now?
That's correct.
Which would undesignate Diamond Point as a collector from Emerald up, so that little crook that's purple currently is designated collector?
Yes.
Because of the expectation back in 2007 with the Hunter Heights, is that right?
That is correct, but it was built and planned for as a local road when West Point was originally subdivided.
So it's physically a local road?
It is physically, right now, a local road.
Okay.
So with this change, this allows us to modify the Master Street Plan, so the portions of Diamond Point that are currently built to local standards now will be shown as a local road on the Master Street Plan, because based on the new subdivision, our estimations of traffic, that is sufficient in order for that to be downgraded to a local road. Does that make, thank you, that's good clarification, does that make sense?
Yes, that does. And I had another, you said Tracks is a private road, is that right?
Tracks is a private road currently, yes.
Which is currently showing to connect, that's Stony Mountain Drive, correct?
That is correct, and Stony Mountain Drive would, would connect to Ilias Cove through Pinnacle Heights.
Am I, I would kind of, I would, who, who, what's the condition of Tracks now?
So Tracks is, you would probably see that as the same as Short Marche, it would have to be gated off and unused and have, would not be allowed for through traffic until any future time that the development would develop out to the west, so potent, so all your, on the approval of the subdivision and the conditional use, you're focusing on the two connections to Mammell, that's on Ridgeland Drive and Diamond Point, or through Ilias. Tracks Road will not be utilized, it'll have to be gated off, it'll have a Knox box that would allow access for fire as needed, but no through traffic on Tracks.
And Tracks Road is a dedicated county right-of-way?
No, sir, Tracks is a private road, the dedication begins at Settlement. To my, I believe the, the actual, I believe that that's where the dedication is.
Is the chief requiring that to be secondary access?
No, sir. So, on the first phase of the build-out on the subdivision, the first phase, and if you go back to that overall map.
Yeah, I mean, eventually, I guess, is what I'm saying.
Well, there wouldn't be a need, so the secondary, you're, you're building your primary and secondary on the first phase, that's Ridgeland and Ilias, so you have your two accesses through Mammell, there's no need for a third access.
Commissioners, this would be similar to Pinnacle Heights, as far as the gate going up at, at the end of Settlement. If you remember, when we went through Pinnacle Heights, the county and the fire chief agreed to go ahead and gate off at Settlement, of course, with knockboxes, so if police or fire need to get in, that's what, and this would be the similar setup here on the Tracks at the, basically dead end of Stony Mountain.
And I'll, and I'll have more comments about the Master Street Plan when we get to that item, but right now, I just kind of want to focus on the subdivision, how this affects the Master Street Plan in this specific area. So as you'll see on this overall for the subdivision, where the previous subdivision showed the access going all the way through it, through Diamond Point, now you'll see that we, on our traffic study, we estimated that about 100 of those homes would likely find that access through Diamond Point would be more efficient, just from the stance of driving versus once the other phases come in and that's, was Stony Mountain is built, then those homes will more than likely find it easier to follow the collector route versus weaving around the roads and hitting stop signs and, and slowing them up. Eventually, over time, as this area develops out to the west, they're anticipating with the improvements of Tracks Road and Settlement Road, that a lot of this traffic on this side of, of the city would likely find it more efficient just to go through Settlement, to get to 365 and get out, versus having to weave all the way through Mammell. And that's typically what your morning and evening traffic find is, what's the least path of resistance, but that would be in the future as things develop out. So that kind of gives you a rundown on the, on the traffic counts, and the traffic, we did find that with the increased potential trip generation, let me refine myself on here, their post-subdivision, let's see, this would effectively reroute more than half of the proposed subdivision traffic through Ilias Cove, which is built to collector standards and connects to Ridgeland Drive, which is also a collector. Staff approximated upon, approximates upon full build-out of all phases that 100 homes would utilize Diamond Point Drive connection, and the remaining 144 would use Ilias Cove. And again, those are just approximations on our side, based on, just evaluating it. Based on the proposed alignments, future development to the west would likely use newly-proposed connections. Based on the traffic impact review, there is one of Stone Canyon Edition, I utilized that, which was done by tra, Traffic Engineering Consultants, who provided vehicle trips per day estimates for a similar development, which is on the north. And out of that, the development was calculated at between 7.2 and 10.2 trips, vehicle trips per day. So I utilized 8.5 vehicle trips per day, and the additional generation by 244 new homes would total approximately 2,074 trips per day. When you split that out by the, what's going to Diamond Point, what would be going through Ilias Cove, 850 trips through Diamond Point, and then 1,024 through Ilias Cove, and those numbers can sound like a lot, but ultimately, when you're talking about the dispersion of time, it, it tends to spread itself out. So when you look at the total trips, with those added in, then you'll find that we're nowhere near meeting the capacities of any of those roads when it comes to the local road and the, and the collector road. So that's where we found that this particular subdivision, as it's designed, would accommodate, those roads would accommodate. Now, as future developments move out to the west, then the question is, what would those traffic counts be in impact? But based on the modification that they've had to the Master Street Plan, ultimately, to move out further west, you have to have further improvement to Tracks Road to make that happen. So, more than likely, that traffic will go that route, because it would become almost in, very inefficient in order to move through the Mammell, that's how we see the proposal. So based on the analysis, staff concludes that the proposed conditional use for the small lots should not increase traffic above the stated volumes for each classification, and recommends approval of the conditional use for small lot. So, staff recommends do pass recommendations to City Council, contingent on further staff, Commissioner and City Engineer comments, with the following conditions. Subdivision is to be annexed into the city of Mammell within 12 months, otherwise resubmission required with further recommendations by the county. And the reason for that is, the, the client wants, or not the client, the applicant wants to annex into the city if, when these subdivisions are in the city, the city reviews the civil plans, the drainage, the streets, all of that. If it does not annex into the city, then the city does not have responsibility over those civils, the county does. So we would need the county to re-review the preliminary plat and make any adjustments according to how they would typically run it in the county, so that's the reason for that. And that's the same way that we handled Pinnacle Heights whenever it came to, to the city. Sidewalks along collector roads in Norman Lane, sidewalks along residential roads can be removed in lieu of the trail system connecting to existing trails adjacent to the subdivision, and that is just allowing for the developer proposing alternative pathways. Emergency turnaround required at the end of Stony Mountain Drive and Tracks Road, and end of Given Drive, and then density of subdivision limited to four units per acre. They proposed 3.5, we're just stating that it should never go above four, it's very unlikely they'll go to that, because once you approve the, the small lot design, they still have limitations that they have to meet on the width and the size, and there's very unlikely they'll be able to fit more in there, but that's up to y'all, if y'all want to leave it at 3.5 as they, they put in there. Considerations, you have your considerations at the bottom when you, when you're deter- Considerations, you have your considerations at the bottom when you, when you're determining your recommendation. Proposed use is designated, located and proposed to be operated. And a lot of these deal with conditional use of commercial properties. But the proposed use is within the provision of conditional uses that's set out in regulation, which it is. The proposed use conforms to all political provisions of this chapter for the district in which it is located and the use facilitates public convenience at that location, which it does. The internal street system ingress and egress, proposed off-street parking, loading and pedestrian ways are adequate and in compliance with the city policy in this chapter, which it is. So you'll find the other items there if you want to go through those and have any questions about it. Otherwise, that's all the comments on the conditional use portion.
Very good. Mr. Gruber, do you have a map of these locations where the traffic counter was set? It wasn't, he presented it at subcommittee, but it's not, it wasn't in.
I don't know that I have, I aren't connected to the server, but let me pull up my, I can tell you where they were. So we have, the first counter was set along Diamond Point roughly just before the Odom, Odom interchange. I believe that's number one. Number two was set up just past Emerald Drive. Would I note, remember, this is kind of the stopping point of where Diamond Point goes from a sixty-foot wide collector standard to a fifty-foot residential standard, and that's how it was plotted. Emerald Drive is sixty foot. And then the last, the last one, I believe, was right here at West Point, just past West Point.
Thank you.
And Mr. Chair, if you feel like discussion is going to carry into the plat portion with the conditional use, because they, if you, if you deny the conditional use, then that means that the plat is not. So there were other, there were public comments that came in under the subdivision plat. I don't know, you want me to carry into that, so?
Yeah, I, I think that, the, the way that I understand these, that they simply put new proposals. So we, we have three comment cards specific to this. I, I'm not for sure if they're wanting to speak on the conditional use, preliminary plat or, or the master plan. I, I would assume it'd probably be conditional use, but I would rather go ahead and hear them.
Okay. And would you allow me to share with you the comments that we have on record from?
Yes, go, yeah, go, you can go ahead and read them, ma'am.
So we've received, we had a, a chance to speak to the residents that live surrounding the proposed access from this development onto the Diamond Point. And if, both residents have been there for quite a long time, I believe, one of them mentioned nineteen ninety-six. Of course, they did state that they're against the proposal because they enjoy the woodage behind them and they certainly do not want the development to come in. And concerns over the, the access point being too close to the one house on the north. The, the proposed, the proposed road is being shifted as far to the south on that proposed future right-of-way in order to provide more space between the house to accommodate that request. There were concerns about the green space, not enough space between the houses that, and the proposed houses. So the, we, we spoke with the applicant and I believe, and the applicant has agreed that they're willing to remove those two lots that are on the end of that property line in order to accommodate a little bit more green space and space between those houses. So I felt, I felt that was a good accommodation by the developer to do that. I believe one of the applicants stated they would prefer not to see any houses on that road, but the two houses coming, coming off.
Commissioners, those would be lots, it looks like it's two forty-one and two forty-two.
And that would provide a little bit, there's, that trail system goes through there. So that would provide a little bit more green space on both sides of that trail system going through. Okay. So with that, the remaining comments that we've spoken to really dealt more with the Master Street Plan and the impacts to the proposed areas, which I'll discuss more on the Master Street Plan if you like.
Okay. Did it conclude your staff report?
Uh, yes, sir.
The commission will hear from the public at this point in time. We do have, actually have four, but one of them is very specific to the master plan. The others just have development or proposal. So if you, if you, if you would approach Mr. Terry Mooney. Yes, sir. Come on up, and if you want to speak specific to the preliminary plat or this is specific to the conditional use, it can be really all three, to tell you the truth, the way that we're hearing this tonight. So it can, it can address all three if you prefer.
Okay, I'm Terry Mooney, nice to meet you everybody here tonight. Based on what I've heard, this proposal, everything y'all talked about tonight is really not even concerning to what I had talked with.
Yours is probably going to be more towards the Master Street Plan amendment, so you may want to talk more to that. But I haven't really addressed, I was going to talk about our conversation. I did have a chance to meet with Mr. Mooney as well as Mr. Perkins and their family.
Would you like to hear the staff report on that before your comment is heard?
Yes, I would.
That'd be fine, we'll call you back.
Okay, thank you.
And then I have a comment card from Ms. Katrina Mooney saying, you're together. And then I have a comment card from Mr. JB Savage. You can approach? Yes, sir, come on up to the podium. Unless it's specific to the master plan, this will be more leaning toward, comment toward the conditional use.
Yeah, the conditional use.
Very good. Would you, would you please state your name and your address for the record, sir?
JB Savage, one seventy-five Diamond Point Drive.
Thank you.
Okay. This is from one of the people in the neighborhood, and I said I'd read this out for them. As a homeowner, citizen and voter in Mammell, I purchased my home based on the street plan at the time of the purchase. I was not notified that three plans could be changed by the city at will. It is also my understanding, this issue went to higher courts and was disallowed. Where is the documentation showing the street plans can be changed by the city while, after being struck down by the higher courts? What was the creation date of the documentation? Where can it be found by the public? What is created after the higher courts made the decision? It's concerning that North Little Rock property to the west of Diamond Point Drive has not been annexed, to my knowledge. Personal property taxes are already high. What is the guarantee that the current citizens will not bear the financial burden to save and care for the neighborhood not currently part of Mammell? There are many situations on almost daily basis where residential or service vehicles are parked directly across from each other on Diamond Point turning into a single-lane road. This creates a hazard to drivers and pedestrians. In addition, there's very little visible speed enforcement on Diamond Point Drive, be it active observation by officials or passive. This creates a hazard for the residents with the current volume of traffic. My question is, why wouldn't we expect this issue to worsen, given the width of the road, the width of the road from Emerald and continuing westward? In addition, what is the city's plan to address this? If no addressed, could this be a potential liability for the city if the master plan was changed? Whether the plans regarding future funding to provide safety and respond to emergencies in a proposed residential area, how would the cost affect the voters and the citizens of Mammell? The proposed homes behind the proposed entrance from Diamond Point Drive appear to be smaller than existing homes that would be adjacent to this. This could possibly lower property values for citizens if used as a count by realtors. Why are these proposed homes not comparable in size to the existing homes? Are the other planned homes in the new neighborhood under consideration?
Thank you.
Okay.
So a, a, a couple of responses, I guess, from the planning commission table here regarding the comments that were read into the record. Is that the city does have the right to change the, the master plan, there's a code section that addresses that. And our code ordinances, she's more interested, or he, I'm not for sure who wrote that. Mr. Gruber can help out. As far as the higher traffic counts, that's why we conducted a traffic study to make sure we would not be impacting the local roadways. And that was well demonstrated, and I thought the staff did a pretty good job of that. Although there's others regarding traffic, once you get to Highway one hundred is, is a little bit of a different story. So I think the traffic analysis, the, the, the building of assurance, it, it appears is, is the same regarding the square footage of the home. The lots are smaller, but the square footage of the home is the same. And it's actually providing more green space than the adjacent subdivision as it's currently proposed. So those are just some of the clarifications, those are the things that I can address from planning commission. Some of the things that she was addressing, obviously the commission can't address, and there's more of a public safety concern. So I just wanted a, a response of the best that we can respond to you and your friends' questions.
My house is the one right on the north. And the property line is already up to my fence. So I don't know how you can have that.
We can bring the map up, it, it seems like there's a, been a concession by the developer to drop the, the two lots there, at least two lots to provide more buffer. I, I don't.
No, I mean, before you cross the trail, my fence, that's.
How close are you to where that road will be?
Well, so, and I'll keep.
It goes right to my fence.
I'll keep in mind.
In my backyard.
Been dedicated, and they're going to shift to the south as far in that right-of-way.
Well, so the right-of-way hasn't been dedicated yet, and the lines, the property lines on here are not accurate. Those are pages lines and they typically are off, so that's, those lines are probably shifted a little bit too far to the north. That house is not on the property line. But it's likely really close to the setback requirement, which is probably eight, eight feet on that property. So the, the, the whole preliminary plat is going to be contingent upon the right-of-way dedication all the way to this to connect the road to Diamond Point. Of course, they're still working through those, those situations, so they still have to meet that requirement to make that happen. But the road, as you noticed, is on here, it has been shifted in that proposed area to the south to create a, a further buffer.
And, and we can't just arbitrarily change, we can only make recommendation to City Council for the master plan. City Council makes the approval of the master plan.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
We, we only make recommendation.
Okay, alright.
So there'll be another one, I'm trying to say, if we move forward, it will be either a do-pass, if, if it moves forward to council, it'll be a do-pass recommendation. The council will also hear that by ordinance three, three, three times as well, too. And your comments are welcome in that form as well.
Alright, thank you. Appreciate it.
Mr. Mosley, I have your remaining card, would you like to talk at the master plan or would you like to be heard now?
My name is Steve Mosley, I'm one of the Ward One aldermen here in Mammell, sixteen Riverwood Place. Appreciate a chance to visit. I really didn't come tonight to specifically comment on this neighborhood. I, I am very uncomfortable with two hundred and forty-four new units going in through a very narrow road there. I will probably be very much against all this when it gets to the city council, but I'm just one vote. I'm, I'm usually the resident-friendly one on the council, so. But I, I have concerns about that, and I also have concerns that that's going to add a lot of traffic to Mammell Boulevard in the morning. And I, I came before you all the other night, and I'll, I'll go ahead, is it okay if I go ahead and follow up on that conversation now or would you rather later?
If you would like it for officially in the record, you may.
Okay, I'll go ahead and do it now. I've been concerned about whether Mammell Boulevard is going to be able to handle all the, the future growth as far as rush hour in the future. We got into a real jam back here in the two thousand teens and property values suffered. And we had to put in a third entrance and it was just a, a mess. And I've visited with RDOT, which is Arkansas Department of Transportation. And I've also, since, since I last talked to you all, I had a conversation with Casey Covington at Metro Plan, he's head of Metro Plan. He pretty much confirmed what, what I found out at RDOT is that we're pretty much stuck with the capacity we've got now to get in and out of the city. So we need to be darn careful about how we develop in the future as far as multifamily housing, bringing, annexing new neighborhoods that are going to bring a lot of traffic in and channel it right down the Boulevard instead of three sixty-five. These are, these are very much concerns I have, and I think all the residents. I think the top priority of the residents back in two thousand and twelve on a study was, they were worried about traffic, trying to get in and out of town. So we're, we're a, we're a commuter city, we're, we're a bedroom community. We're not, we, we don't have, it's not like a downtown area where there's gobs of ways to get out. And so we've got to be careful going down. I did talk to Casey Covington to find out if they do studies, complimentary studies on traffic and land use and how they're related and whether something's appropriate for our city based on our traffic situation. And they do do free cost, or free studies on this kind of thing. And they, he said they occasionally charge us a little bit, but it's apparently some specialized thing or whatever. But I would, I very much encourage the planning commission to get Casey Covington in front of you guys as soon as possible and kind of get a good overall view of what we're looking at coming down the road. I'm trying to get him to come in front of the city council. I was trying to get him in there as soon as possible, he's gone in March, but he is going to come before us, I think, in April. And we've got a lot of questions for him, see what we can find out. We've got a lot of things in the, in the pipeline here that are going to affect Mammell Boulevard traffic like this subdivision. And also if we go, if we go ahead and pass all the land use and the zoning changes that you all have put before us, that would convert a lot of commercial into residential. So we, we need to, we need to know what the future holds before we just start another freight train toward a brick wall like we had going back there in, in two thousand and twelve and two thousand and fifteen. So I think that may be about all I wanted to share with you. But he is going to come before us and I would very much urge you all to get him before you guys just as soon as possible. And I would challenge all the new, new commissioners to look at things. You know, not, not just always go down the road doing exactly what we've always done. I don't think, I don't think the planning commission and, and the city council has ever really considered the, the effect on Mammell Boulevard traffic as far as our development goes. And that's, we need to start doing that. So please, please take some steps to do that. So thank you very much, I appreciate your time.
Thank you. On the Mosley. Just a couple of comments regarding that, and I think we have to be careful as the planning commission is that, you know, we have a charge too here, Mr. Mosley, is that we have to apply, we used to be blue books and now we have all electronic documents. So with that being said, is that, that, that blue book says we follow the master plan and it gives us a traffic count that's permissible on the road. So we have an applicant before us and based upon that due diligence is well below that. So our infrastructure, if you will, seems to be able to support the traffic. The problem is, we get to one hundred, which we don't own or control that road. That's owned by RDOT, and you and I have had this conversation. I just wanted to tell the folks out there as well, too, to have a voice. And there is a commissioner that represents this area, I don't know how many, there's five or seven or something like that. And, and those are the people that can affect one hundred. So if we were to sequester, I use a different word at the committee, I'll, I'll use a different one this time. So if we were to sequester development as a result of the traffic count and this developer says, well, we followed the blue book and everything that's through it, we would probably lose because it, we have dedicated, and he, he would spend even more money, probably demonstrated that the traffic count met the requirements. So what, what goes on, I think we have to be careful from the standpoint of like, well, we think Highway one hundred has too much traffic. I agree, I drive it every day, too, I can eat like most people in the city. But we have to be careful about when an application's before us, if they meet our code and our ordinances, it's, it's very difficult for us to deny that application because they've done their due diligence to be able to demonstrate that they can comply and come into the city. If we want to do something different, and I, I think, I think Commissioner Winnick is going to move forward with something that you'll be, you'll be happy to hear, too, is like officially, we, we know that we need another document, whatever you want to call it, master plan, Mammell Forward Two, whatever the case is. But you know, we, and I, I said that publicly two weeks ago to you, and I say it the same today, it's, it's time to invest. I, I don't know, I don't think anything free really gets you what you probably pay for. So I, I would encourage you to invest appropriately in a plan that we is developing. And maybe it comes back and local roads go from fifteen hundred, well, I said we were at fif, is that right, Scott?
Twenty-five hundred.
So maybe twenty-five hundred goes to fifteen hundred, four thousand. But we don't have any documentation in front of us to make that a different decision, other than us sitting in our car on Highway 100, just like the rest of us, saying that traffic is a problem. And I don't know that this commission, or you, can really directly address that without a plan that demonstrates that we need to change what we're doing on the local side.
I appreciate your comments. All I'm saying, I don't know all the answers.
I don't either.
All I'm saying is, we need, we need to look at things out of the box and see if there isn't some, there, there's ways to maybe develop things that don't, don't.
But I think as a commission, we have to be careful that we're just not arbitrarily.
I understand.
Capriciously using these words that Andrew likes to use, is that we, we have to be careful just to not invent things without a demonstrated document to back it up to give us that guidance.
I understand. I understand some of your consideration. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chair, may I ask a question?
Yeah, yeah. Ms. Winnick has a question for you, Steve.
So again, I, I speak without knowledge of being on City Hall again, just a resident. I have a healthcare background. So I'm sitting here and listening and listening to what our, our chair says, and I look at these studies. And I guess my question now is, okay, we know what happens internally, right? What happens when you do the math to the artery, the main arteries out, which is Maumell?
Maumell Boulevard.
So does that study, is there a study that expands that to the study to say we can handle that, that, I don't wanna say congestion, that increased volume on Maumell during those hours? That's, I guess that's what I'm thinking now, having sat in that traffic as well. I think of the emergency vehicle, not so much my inconvenience, but the emergency vehicles, can they get to where they're going with the increase on those main arteries that flow out of our community to get us out?
So to answer your question, first of all, once this traffic leaves the Diamond Point area or the Bridgeland area, we don't know if they go left or they go right, and that traffic can then, it then disperses even further. So as it works through the spider web of the street systems, then when you look at the growth onto the main arteries that are far away versus close to, it, it's different. It's hard to predict. But I will say this, that understanding that all the subdivisions and developments that are approved by the city, Planning Commission that are proposed, that growth happens slowly, and the city makes adjustments as we move forward through these. We, we grow at about 100 houses a year on average right now, and that's down from our peak before the, the housing crisis. The, the traffic counts on Maumell Boulevard are less than they were pre-COVID. And speaking, actually, we did meet with Casey Covington yesterday, the mayor, myself, the city attorney. And he, they are going to be bringing information to the City Council. He did say he's gonna provide me some short-term information that I could bring to the City Council before they can meet back in March. But there are decisions that are being made to provide more guidance to the region on things like this. But they're gonna come and help discern some of that information for you. But I will say this, that when, when you're making decisions as a Planning Commission, I think the, the chair made the best comment that we're making the decision based on them meeting the criteria that are, that in the guidelines that are allowed in the ordinance. And you have to be careful about kind of creating a moratorium on development based on unknowns whenever they're meeting the criteria that is surrounding this development. From a planning perspective, I have zero concerns about the impacts that this development is gonna have on Maumell Boulevard when you look at the traffic counts and the capacity that Maumell Boulevard now has because of the third interchange has opened up. And we're seeing over 10,000 traffic counts on that road a day, so it is taking some of that additional traffic. In other conversations, they've made improvements on 430, adding that additional lane onto Cantrell, which has had a significant impact on getting traffic out. And I will also say that in, in the Metro Plan document that was provided to City Council, that RDOT does have a 10-year plan in order to widen Maumell Boulevard from 430 to somewhere around Counts Massey. And speaking with Metro Plan, it is highly unlikely that they would take that off now with the third interchange. It may make some adjustments, but they're looking at that, and that is on the plan as well. 430 was on the plan books, and it's finally here. So adjustments are made when the need is there. If you don't provide the need, then number one, you won't get the adjustments in these streets, but then you also won't have a development and growth as a city. So you kind of have to be careful, and that's what we look at from a planning perspective, how we're doing development that is sensitive, and we're doing our due diligence to protect the surrounding area, and you're making decisions on how that's impacting the surrounding area.
Thank you.
Very good.
Okay, I just wanted, I would just encourage you all to get with Mr. Covington just as a first step. He may say, hey, you're good. You're good now that you got the third entrance. That's what I hope he'll say. But my guess is he's gonna, there's gonna be some caveats in there, so I just, I just want us all to be educated. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I believe Mrs. Savage may want to execute her public comment at this point in time.
You may come forward. I don't have a comic card for you, man.
Yeah, I didn't put my name on.
Okay.
Oh.
Just to, and you, same address?
Yes, 175 Diamond Point.
They wanna be presumptuous.
Yeah, I'm Tammy Savage, and we've lived in Maumell for 20 years or plus. And it was my understanding that Track B was never proposed to be a street, a road. When we bought the house, we were told, and I know this is just verbal.
When did you buy the house?
In 90, no, 2005, 2005.
So you were here in 2007 when the previous developer came through?
Yes.
Okay.
And we were part of the, the claim that the city had against Mr. Norman or Arkansas Excavation. And, but we lived at another residence prior to, so we've, you know, purchased several, couple of homes out here. And we were told that that was just green space, and it was our understanding that, and which is.
You, you might share with me who told you that?
No, I don't know who it was.
Okay.
Okay, but that was my mistake for not, you know, investigating to find out exactly what the case was. And the word ransom lot was thrown out several times, and I have been informed that, you know, the city will not allow that any longer. But.
I'm sorry, could you, would not allow what, Scott?
Ransom lots, where they have just a, you know, a small.
Little control access to a possible future development. Okay, I understand.
And, you know, I've raised my family out here. And, you know, my concern is there, the traffic and, you know, the width of the road. I mean, it's, and I've got a picture that I took today where you have one car parked on the right and a huge, like an Amazon truck on the other side. I mean, there's no room. I, you know, you have to wait until one of the vehicle moves, and it's very dangerous. And, you know, pedestrians drive through there very fast. And where I am, when you back out, if there's cars parked along the street, it's very hard to see oncoming traffic. And then when I'm pulling into my driveway, if there's a car behind me, I mean, I practically have to stop in order to turn into my driveway. And, you know, the people get very irate at me, you know, because I'm going too slow. But if I, you know, if I don't stop and, you know, I try to be as careful as I can, but it's, there's just no room. And the, the road is going to go right at, well, and I mean, we've discussed this. It's so close to our fence, and I know they've talked about moving it over closer to my neighbor. You know, and I just, I don't, I don't feel that there is sufficient room there to, for a, a development of 244 homes. I mean, I wish each one of you could come out and look, and I don't, maybe y'all have. I don't know. But if you could come out and look and see, you know, what, what we're faced with, you know, it, it's just a bad situation, and I strongly disagree with this development. And I, I do appreciate Mr. Norman not putting the houses directly behind us. I know that, you know, at one time, Mr. Norman had proposed to buy in our home. But one of our conditions was that if he did that, then he needed to tear the home down because it, you know, it, I mean, it's just not enough room there. And the, you know, if you have all of the emergency vehicles coming through there, it's just, you know, I'm pleading and I'm begging. I love Maumell. Okay, I gotta stop.
Thank you for your comments. Scott, where, the, the, the road that goes by their house, it, it is, it is, under the current master street plan, it is what type of road?
It is designated as a collector, but it is built to a local.
And what type of road will it be under the revised master street plan?
A local road.
So we're down, we're downgrading you. I just want to make sure that you understood that.
Do you want now?
We're, based upon the master plan, we're actually downgrading your classification of the road. So we're actually reducing the amount of traffic by this modification that, that we're actually providing less opportunity for increased traffic. Because if we left it the way that it is on the master plan anyway, I can't speak for the development, you would have 5,000 vehicles permitted to be able to go along that road. But we're, we're downgrading based upon what staff is recommending, and that maximum amount is 2,500. And under the trip count, I don't know which one this is, Scott, on here, but I, I think you said you were picking up another 600 or something like that.
About 850 estimated based on the.
The total is what going?
The total going through the West Point section was, looks like 850 plus, it was about 1,024. Yep.
So it's, it's not quite half of the capacity of that road, under current classification. I understand your concerns about the traffic, and I understand your concerns about the emergency vehicle, but how the road is classified is how we, we have to look at the ability of the development to sustain or that road to be able to sustain the traffic.
Do you think, though, that seven days of monitoring is sufficient?
Well, I assume that this was, you did this in-house, correct, Scott?
Uh, yes, sir.
Um, it can be debatable a little bit.
Yeah.
It's a representative data. I, I don't, I don't want to get into statistics of a traffic study, but if, if they did the statistical analysis on it, make sure they have a correct data capture, they answer that, then yes. Can that happen in seven days? Yes. Does it? I don't know. I don't know if they did the statistical analysis on that. You have to talk with Mr. Grummer on that, but that's, this is what they're presenting before us.
Right, okay. And now, would they put stop signs? I mean, they're at our area. I mean, because those people are gonna fly through there. They fly through there at a curve now.
So, so this would require more than likely a three-way stop. We would unlikely recommend a, through a road from Norma to Diamond Point. So this would actually slow traffic. It would cause them to stop and turn around. And I also will mention that we have other subdivisions that have houses that are within this width to a local road is on a corner as well. So there's, it's comparable to many other neighborhoods that we have.
What about the parking on the street?
Based on what you said, Miss Savage, I was thinking about this. I know that code enforcement, that we have a city code provision about, it's a certain number of days if your vehicle is parked on the street without it being moved, it can be cited. And I occasionally, maybe once every six months or so, I'll see a ticket in district court over that. Some cities have much more stricter street parking rules. My impression is that those rules, while they come with benefits, you have easier movement on the streets. You might be able to move a little quicker. It doesn't, it doesn't revert to a one lane while you wait, you know, because you got two people parked on both sides of the street. So while they come with benefits, my impression is that they also can be pretty unpopular. Because a lot of people kind of expect that, yeah, I can park in front of my house on the street, or if I'm inviting people over, you know.
Right, and I understand.
There aren't, there aren't zero, it's not, certainly not the case that there's nothing that can be done. And it might be worthwhile, if this master street plan thing does go through and the development and so forth, it might be worthwhile for you to meet up with your alderman or alderwoman and ask for a new code provision that restricts. And also, if they put in a three-way stop, I think this would be the, the parking committee or something like that. They might be able to restrict parking to the, to the stop sign, so that you have better visibility through the intersection.
Yeah, 'cause when I back out of my driveway, if the person that lives directly across the street from me, if they're parking on the street, when I back out, I mean.
We, we appreciate your comment. Did you have anything new to bring us this evening, other than, but you've said, we understand your concerns. We do.
Yeah. Would y'all like to look at my photos that I, I may not, you know?
Only if you want them submitted as part of the record.
Yeah, I would.
Okay, you may present them.
Okay, who do I show them to?
You can just bring them here. We'll just, we'll just bring them up in matter of record. They'll be, they'll be passed along to the council, assuming we gotta do pass. So if, if not, then it won't be. Wait, 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 wait. Do you have them printed? Then I would ask for you.
Can I email it?
Yes, email Mr. Line here or Mr. Grummer.
And, and I would probably recommend, that's a code enforcement situation. It doesn't really pertain to this, what's on the agenda. I would suggest that you contact me. I can get my code enforcement and the police to make sure.
Yeah, I think she's trying to make it a position of sa, of safety. That's okay. I think, I think.
Right.
I understand, and we appreciate it. I think, I think that's her position, Scott, so.
Yes, and, and we can, we can work with that from a code enforcement standpoint. We'll also say just from, we, we do allow parking in the street around the entire city. And actually, parking in the street does mitigate speed because as traffic goes through it, it does slow it down.
Okay, well, we're gonna move, we're gonna go ahead and move forward with our agenda. And I appreciate all, all the public comments this evening. It's been a good discussion. So do we have any other, so we are, just to recap here, we are on the, on item one of whole business for the proposed conditional use permit, and is there any other discussion in mind, commissioners regarding this item or staff?
Yes.
Go ahead, Tracy.
Is the conditional use part of the street still? I mean, I got a street comment or question and a conditional use question.
So the, the conditional use is only to allow small lot design in the subdivision itself.
Okay. So. I'm sorry. Thank you. In section 94, 163, it's talking about the square footages to the neighborhoods adjacent. Scott, you have mentioned West Point today, and then I believe in a subcommittee meeting, not this month, but last. But on the drawings, it shows North Point and Pinnacle, was it Pinnacle Heights?
Pinnacle Heights.
And then Park Ridge. And I don't honestly know that Park Ridge or North Point will have a difference of square footage sizes as opposed to the West Point. I assume they're kind of similar. But what is the square footage for Pinnacle Heights?
I believe the applicant's, the, well, actually, no, he's not here. I can, I can give you that if you want. Just, it's gonna give you a second to pull that up.
And the reason I'm asking that is, as I understand that provision in the ordinance, that because this neighborhood abuts. that because this neighborhood abuts that neighborhood, and according to these drawings, it abuts three of the neighborhoods, but I didn't see West Point on there. It looks like North Point and Park Ridge are in between, not West Point.
West Point is the abutting subdivision to this subdivision.
Okay. Well, all right, maybe the drawing's not, that, on the drawing, it showed the other two.
Which, which drawing are you referring to, Commissioner Gill?
The exhibits that were submitted on these preliminary plots. On page two, for example, right there in the fold, it says Park Ridge addition phase two.
It said West Point being twelve fifty in the staff analysis, Tracy, in the second paragraph. If, if your question is West Point, it shows to be...
Well, and that's all right, but I guess, I don't, I'm not as concerned about those as I am the Pinnacle Heights. Because I was, I went on a commission then, I don't remember, but it seemed like those were for larger homes. And I'm thinking larger, like twenty-two, twenty-five, hundred-foot minimums. Does that ring a bell?
Probably in that range.
And you're talking about on the third page to the...
To the south.
To the south?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, that also, those step-down requirements also take into accommodation the, the distance between the, the neighborhood. And so once you exceed, uh, and we looked at the distances between, and, uh, those had larger green spaces, so it didn't come into play as far as the step-down requirements that I recall.
The lot lines are not adjacent. They put green space between.
You know, they get a little...
Okay.
They get more leeway, and there's more green space.
So there to the south, they've got a, a tr- proposed, currently proposed as the trail, and then that would be designated green space. So the lot lines...
I think the distance was a hundred and fifty feet.
Right.
But then I thought that provision said at a maximum of twenty-three percent. It was either or, not a one.
Right. That's, and that's the first level, um, so...
But we're not, we're more than twenty-three percent. If it's, it looked like the two thousand square foot is, if it's more than that, it just caps at two thousand.
So what, what we can do now, there's also in that step-down requirement is, as you move from lines of houses, it can further step downs until you get down to the preferred. So if you want us to do a verification of those square footages and put a condition on the approval that all the houses that are abutting, those subdivisions, that they do comply with that ordinance, we can make sure that, um, uh, that is adjusted and taken care of.
If they fit on a small lot.
If, right. Otherwise, they'll have to increase the size of those lots.
They'll have to revise the plat.
Right. And technically, the, the plat itself, if they revise it, as long as they're not increasing the number of lots, then it doesn't have to come back for approval, as long as nothing significantly changes above that.
So on page four of the preliminary plat, it shows those lots along Stony Heights Cove is almost backing up. It's a little bit more than the width of the bike trail. So it's certainly not a hundred and fifty feet. I mean, the lot's a hundred and ten foot deep. So if you were at a hundred and fifty feet, it's gonna eliminate all those lots to the street, if, if I understood that correctly. Now, I'm asking that as a question. I'm not saying that's the way it is. I'm trying to make sure that I'm reading that right. Because if, if that's true, then I don't think we have the authority to approve this as it is right now, the way this is shown.
And which, which area are you speaking of on, on number four? The lots that are on the cul-de-sac on...
Page four, sheet number four, the southernmost street there is Stony Heights.
Right.
The lots are showing to be a hundred and ten foot deep. And then you've got a bike trail just past that, so that, that step-down distance that you're talking about, it may be, oh, out on the street, on, uh, on the collector's street, Stony Mountain, but not on Stony Heights.
Are you, you talking about increasing the length of the lot or the width of the lot?
I guess I'm questioning...
So typically, to make, you can make a larger lot, a larger house by increasing the size of the lot by width rather than by length, and you're not impacting the street or the, uh, the subdivision to the south of it?
Yes, then that would satisfy that.
That's correct.
If it needs to be satisfied.
If it needs to, and that's where, I, I do know when Pinnacle Heights did come through, the proposal was for smaller, smaller type homes that fit within smaller homes, but a higher-end home. But we can, and I apologize, we should have verified the step-down on that. But ultimately, if you, uh, you can put a condition on there that all lots, uh, to adjacent properties must meet that step-down requirement, and we can make sure that anything that does not meet that, that the lot, uh, lot width be increased in order to accommodate, uh, the proper square footage, so that it does not impact the adjacent properties.
Well, this is not a condition put on my planning permission. This is a condition by code, so it has to be enforced.
It has to be enforced, right.
So, I, I guess that's one point. I've got a few points. As part of the conditional use, the plat showing the right-of-way for Stony Mountain is a collector's street, which we talked a lot about, the collector's street versus the local street. Now, on the site plan, it's showing a little schematic there of a twenty-seven-foot urban residential section, sixty-foot right-of-way, which is shown as Stony Mountain. And then the other streets are fifty-foot right-of-ways. But the street itself is still only twenty-seven feet wide. So herein the Savage's concern, and frankly, that was a concern of mine, if we're calling it a collector's street, and we're talking about Ridgeland, or we're talking about Diamond Point beyond Emerald, where those roads are wider. Not the right-of-way, I don't know about the right-of-way, but the width of the asphalt is wider. So it more easily supports traffic going back and forth without the concerns that, like, Savages have. And we have a lot of streets like that. So I guess my question is, why is it a sixty-foot right-of-way if it's still only carrying a twenty-seven-foot wide road?
And which road is this you're speaking on?
The main road, the collector road, Stony Mountain, the one that comes up to Elias and ultimately to Ridgeland.
Right. So why is it a sixty-foot right-of-way?
Well, it, it is a sixty-foot, which sounds good, and I think what we hear is that it's a wider road.
Uh, sixty-foot is the standard width for a collector road.
Okay, that's the right-of-way.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm maybe missing.
You have, you have, you have, you're picking up a sidewalk on that cross-section, is the difference?
Yeah, but the sidewalk, and I, I support the sidewalk on that collector's street for sure. But it still seems to me that the street itself should be wider, so...
What, what is the, what is the master plan called for on back-to-back curb sections on that sixty-foot section?
So, section, section fifty-four, one oh five, which has the table for, in our master street plan, for collectors with a sixty-foot right-of-way, twenty-seven feet to forty-six feet is the, is the width. So it's, it's at the minimum width, but it's, because twenty-seven foot meets the standard of collector.
Now, one thing that I would point out, as far as the location of this collector, you know, I kind of almost see it similar to whenever the Mammell Valley Drive was approved. That connected, um, Osage to Mammell Valley Estates. That road was technically at the furthest point where traffic would split and either go Mammell Valley or it'd go Osage. So, um, we, uh, they still kept that as a collector, but they, uh, I'm sorry, they downgraded the street to a local because the traffic counts were not estimated to, to come to anything for a collector. But they built the road to a collector's size. On this one, I, I don't necessarily see a lot of through-traffic coming on this, where you're gonna have more volume like other collectors based on the location where it is, where it dumps into the arterial, so...
I would disagree. If we're gonna, if it's thinking that it's gonna connect to Trax Road, and we're thinking that a lot of this traffic is gonna migrate out to Palermo, then I think that road would certainly benefit from being a wider road, same as settlement.
Be careful about widths and road widths. Just because you go to a wider road, usually it, it, it helps traffic go faster. It doesn't impede speed.
Well, but safety is there as well.
The more narrow, the more narrow the road is, even if you have cars parked on the side. So if you have a car parked on the side, and, and I understand the emergency situation and, and sight distance, that's a little bit different issue. But if you have that parked, you're going to go slower and not faster. So the wider you get the road, the faster the traffic's gonna go.
And that becomes a dangerous thing when you have, uh, you have, uh, the driveways that are backing out into, I live on a collector's street.
And this is a small lot neighborhood with more driveways. So we're kind of in the wrong direction on that.
No, you're kind of wanting to slow traffic down, uh, in my opinion. Now, uh, these, any approvals would be contingent upon the review and approval of the city engineer of the civil plan. So they're gonna have to review the streets and make sure that the street width is adequate.
Was there a varied street count on the master plan regarding the, the width at the collector level? Was there a range, or is there any, like, guidance provided?
On a collector's street?
Yes.
I mean, it's up to five thousand?
Regardless of width?
Regardless of width. Now, and, and I will also say, as far as those counts are concerned, Metro Plan said that you have to be careful about how you look at those counts because, um, it's not necessarily, i- it's, it's variable. Uh, there's a lot of things that vary, and, um, and just because it has a limit doesn't necessarily mean that the road can't handle those, those counts. So same way with, uh, he said comparable to Mammell Boulevard. Chenal Parkway would be probably comparable, and it hits over fifty thousand, uh, counts, uh, traffic counts versus, uh, Mammell Boulevard, which is around twenty-four right now, um, twenty, twenty-four thousand per day. So on this one, again, um, and I'm, I'm very, I'm a, from a planning perspective, I'm an advocate of narrower roads to slow traffic. Slower traffic makes it safer. If you widen a road, it becomes a speedway, and traffic goes faster. Even with curves, they can go do whatever around a curve. So, um, from a collector's standpoint in this location. But I will say that we'll be more than happy to have, uh, the, and have that, you know, again, contingent upon the city engineer's review. I typically lean on the city engineer as to his recommendation when it comes to road, uh, road design.
And Jason, you said that, that standard is twenty-seven feet at a minimum to forty-six feet?
Yes, so for a collector, it's sixty-foot right-of-way, twenty-seven feet to forty-six feet. And then if you go down to local streets, just, we're there, and you see on a sheet talking about urban residential. An urban residential in a fifty-foot right-of-way is also twenty-seven feet. So either way, you're, you're at twenty-seven feet curb, back of curb to back of curb. And I, I agree with Chairman Johnson, the width of a road, a lot of, a lot of places will squeeze the road down a little bit. In fact, what you might be seeing in the future with some development on Club Manor, you know, Club Manor right now is four lanes between Millwood and Odom. The plan there is squeezing that down to two lanes, just make it, to make it more pedestrian-friendly. And in this case, that's what we're looking for by requesting on the collector itself sidewalks versus a trip versus the other roads, residential, we're asking for trails to go through. And that's also gonna include some mid-block crossings, which will ultimately slow down as well. But yes, it does meet the minimum for a collector.
And the difference is, on Club Manor, you're in a dense commercial area as opposed to a deep residential neighborhood. So I just, I see a difference personally.
Now, when you, when you do widen the collector, the, uh, the cross-sections of a collector with a wider, uh, width typically are there to accommodate bike lanes and additional facilities that you're putting within the road.
So, okay, that, that's a concern, but let me jump a little bit further. We're, we're still conditional use, right? Okay, so part of staff's findings, I guess, were those nine points in the section ninety-four point, or dash ninety-eight. And, yeah. It talked about, or excuse me, ninety-four dash one ninety, uh, one sixty-three. And that talks about the small lot, where those are appropriate. It says in section E, appropriate locations. And to me, a small lot, in the year that I've been here, we've worked, or I'm aware of three of them, I guess. The one out on White Oak Bayou, or off White Oak. The one off of three sixty-five that had been approved before, and then was downgraded a little bit with a number of lots. And then Villages of Mammell is kind of right there, right off the Boulevard, off Highway one hundred. But all three of those neighborhoods, to me, are what I would say more appropriate locations because they're adjacent to a immediate major road that's gonna funnel that traffic out. And I understand all the car, the traffic counts, but that, even as it is, that supports the width of the road perhaps. But as far as the appropriate location, to me, I don't, I don't see that. I, I just see it as R-one, and we're being asked for conditional use. And to me, that's, it, if we go back in there, that to me is a different type of location. I'd said in the subcommittee meeting with respect to the driveways, and I didn't find, and Jason, it may be in there, is the parking for a house, single-family dwelling. And the only thing I saw was it requires two parking spaces. Right, the driveway width, if it were a two-car garage. So those neighborhoods, when I've driven through, and I expressed this concern before, is that people, lots more people are parking in the street because we've allowed for a much shorter driveway. Most of these are fifteen-foot, some of them there with the sidewalk are twenty-foot, which is the minimum. And I've driven through those neighborhoods, and as I expected, they're, they're hanging over the street, over the curbs, and they're even going over, and some of them are in the yards, either driving, some of them are added to the sides of the driveway. Okay. So what it appears to me is that we have a little bit of conflict, because if we go to a parking code in our code, it calls out for a nine-foot-wide parking space, twenty-foot deep. Now, that'd be in a parking lot, but that's what the city engineer presumably has said, that's what it takes to park a car. But when we permit these small lots, especially having forbid with a fifteen-foot driveway, we've already defeated what we said was a standard space to park a car. So we're encouraging more cars to park on the street, which if we drive through those neighborhoods, that's exactly what we see. The front ends of trucks are hanging over the curb, which is specifically disallowed. It says in the code, there's supposed to be five feet of spacing between the right-of-way and the parking area. So if we're allowing a short driveway, a exceptionally short driveway, there's no way you're gonna have five feet. And it talks about safety and loading and unloading a car. And you think of all the little moms popping their hatchbacks open and walking around the back to get the groceries out of the car, and they're tripping on the curb, or there's cars racing back and forth. So I, I...
Do you have a proposal? Do you, do you wanna push the house back on a greater setback? And do you wanna talk with the applicant to see if there's something to address your concern? I under, I understand your concern.
Yeah, but my concern is that...
Where, where are we going?
We got, I don't wanna say too many houses, because the number of houses might be more if it was a R-one, just straight out, like what was approved before. And I don't know that that would be approved again because of the collector's street and everything. But I personally would like to see R-one setbacks to the driveway, so the houses sit back and you get more cars off the street to begin with. They're gonna be narrower lots. So what we see in those other neighborhoods is by the time they park one car in a double-wide driveway, they can hardly get a second car in. If the driveways were wider, it's strange to me that a driveway can be sixteen feet wide, but a parking space has to be eighteen feet wide, or, you know, for two cars. So a typical two-car garage on the smaller homes is sixteen-foot, and the driveway comes right out the garage door to the curb. And then the cars in a parking lot, it, it, it requires space to turn. It's, I think, what she was alluding to, you have to swing wide because the driveway's so narrow. To me, we're, we're encouraging, I don't think that's good design personally. But, so where we go with that is, um, let me see here, talk about safety, and those are all items that are in that section that are referenced. We talked about the small lot. I, I think, again, the small lot is not in appropriate location. And that, to me, is because of where we're coming through the other neighborhoods. It's a more dense neighborhood, and I just think it should be a R-one. But I appreciate the fact that they've got so much green space in there. So maybe that offsets the number of lots. But I still have a concern, which we can address, I don't know procedurally, if that step-down is an issue. I just don't want somebody to come back on us later because we procedurally approved something that we weren't able to.
I don't think we can procedurally approve anything that's caught, you have to follow code. So if it's by code, staff has to follow it. We have a choice. We can't overrule code, and that, that would be called variance.
Yeah, I understand that.
So the variance would be that, and that's not before us. So I'm, I'm asking, Trace, what, what do you wanna ask the applicant? Do you, do you wanna ask the applicant to set the house back? We can begin having a conversation with him. He's here, or what are you asking?
Do you, it's, it's Roy, I guess, right? Really, that, and you know the code, probably, certainly... Really, you know the code probably certainly better than I do, and that specifically regarding the setback. If that, with what I was reading, at the twenty percent, twenty-three percent, I read that as that's the maximum, not an either-or. So regardless of the step-down, it still could only be up to twenty-three percent. Is that, is that right? I guess that's an answer question.
That's, that would be a maximum at the line of homes that abut that subdivision. But then you also can consider addition, it has in there additional step-down beyond that if they want to go smaller into the subdivision.
Well, that's right. So if that were to be a-
Sorry, am I, because we've gotten that, set down, looked at that code section as well. But it's, I thought that the step-down within the development can only contribute to the maximum of twenty-three, wasn't?
So it says, so a reduction in the minimum square footage allowed in a subdivision may be achieved by any combination of the following methods, up to a maximum of twenty-three percent. The following reductions are calculated from the abutting subdivision with the highest required minimum square footage of living area. Number A, a reduction in the minimum square footage by eight percent is allowed by rights. So they get eight percent regardless.
Right.
The second one is a reduction in minimum square footage by an additional five percent. So you can go eight plus five, is allowed with the provision of each fifty-foot buffer of undisturbed open space. Now, the buffer transitions throughout their buffer, so it goes anywhere from fifty up to over a hundred and fifty-plus.
I have a question on that, actually.
Yes.
Do you measure the buffer from the narrowest, like Tracy was referring to? He was pointing out the, the narrowest buffer between this subdivision and the one to the south is just the width of a bicycle path. Or do you look at the widest? Do you take the average? What do you, how do you usually measure that?
Well, I mean, I was calculating, I mean, if you had a consistent buffer, then it would be easy to calculate. But I don't take an average. I just, I was basing it based upon the location that you have to the adjoining properties.
Okay. And to be honest, when Scott and I were looking at this, we were looking at the east. We were looking at West Point, right?
Correct.
Where there's a big buffer.
Right.
So, well, okay, then, so Chairman, you asked me to ask Roy, I guess, if, if that's an issue on those lots on the southern edge, whatever that street was there, then that could be adjusted by changing those lot sizes so a larger house could go in those lots.
Roy Andrews, two-hundred KC Drive, yes, we would, if, yes, we would adjust that. We would go look at the bill of assurance, see what that size was, and we would adjust those. And if I have to make the, excuse me, if we have to make the lot wider to accommodate a bigger house, then we will. I mean, like the chairman said, we have to make code regardless.
Well, and in keeping the streets where they are, which I guess would be your preference, that would seem to be the easier route.
That's not saying we couldn't move the street and get a larger buffer there as well.
What would your, what would the developer think as terms of, aside from that, going back to the collector's street being wider than the twenty-seven feet?
I think we have to be very careful about tipping over into our engineers' role in projects. So if, you know, I always, although I am a professional registered engineer, even though I have really a strong opinion on what, where, what it should be, I don't because we hire a professional for that. And if he feels like it needs to be wider, then he will make that recommendation to staff. So right now, with the master street plan, the way that it is, we have a minimum twenty-seven, the maximum is forty. So, you know, I would not feel comfortable myself just arbitrarily saying, I think thirty's good. Let's pick thirty-two. Thirty-three, I think, is good. There has to be a sound reason, engineering-wise, why that width is selected. And I offered, and I offer just based on my experience here and just experience as an engineer, wider is faster, I promise you, every time. So I'm very cautious about widening it up without some input, and we're at the preliminary stages. If he wants to go wider, they have the right to do that. I mean, it, Mazan, or it's not Mazan, he was retired, but his firm would make that recommendation, yeah.
And why would a collector's street, why would they add the variance to make it allowed to be so much wider? If it weren't to, I mean, what would be the purpose of that?
I'm just saying is that there needs to be sound preliminary judgment in that selection. And I don't know that that resides at the commission other than just, I think it needs to be wider.
Well, I think the, you get the differences on the collectors depending on what is along the collector. If it's all residential, then of course you're not going to have as much traffic volume per se. Then if you were on a, in a commercial or office area where you're going to have constant traffic coming in and out, I think that's where you get the difference of a collector, let's just call it a residential collector versus a commercial collector. And I think that's where you get your variance of twenty-seven feet to forty-six feet. And this can be very dependent on what abuts that collector itself. So that's why, let's say, Club Manor is considered a collector and it's forty-six feet. It's because you have all, you have Kroger and you have all the other commercial and office on it versus Emerald or Diamond Point, which are all residential. But that's where, of course, that's where all, everything, as it's called, collects. So I think that's where you have your difference in your collector's size. So twenty-seven typically is going to be, collectors are typically residential, probably twenty-seven to thirty-two feet versus commercial is where you're going to see your thirty-six to forty-two foot wide.
Yeah, I think that what you said, Tracy, as far as the overhang is pretty much out. So, you know, if you've done some homework there and went through and you're nine to twenty, although that is a commercial parking stall, which is different than a residential house.
But it has to do with the length of the vehicle.
Yeah, but, you know, you're going to park next to your wife a little closer because, you know, she's not going to ding your door. But it, your analysis or your observation is true. So, you know, if you feel that backing them up another five foot on setback, I don't think it kills the deal. If that's what you want, we need to recommend that that's what you're asking. And, you know, he's either going to say yes or no.
And, and I brought that up at subcommittee and I think-
We will concede to twenty-foot setback.
But you did concede a twenty-foot where there's a sidewalk.
We will concede to all lots having a twenty-foot setback.
Twenty-foot?
Yes.
Not twenty-five foot?
So the, and let me make a point, on the small lot provision within the ordinance, the, it does, I mean, it is in there that it's no minimum than fifteen feet. So they, if they wish to request fifteen, they have, it is in the ordinance to be able to allow that.
Well, I understand that.
Right. But going twenty-five, in my opinion, going twenty-five is more of a larger lot. And you're almost speaking R-one type, which, other than the width of the, of the lot, that's, I think twenty feet is probably sufficient from a planning perspective. And I agree as well. Those could be provisions as far as fifteen-foot that could create some challenges per se in some of the lots.
What's the minimum set on R-one?
Twenty-five feet. And the, the reason for the conditional use is just as much for the setbacks as it is for the, but I believe the, what's the average square footage of the lots on these? Roy?
Point one thirty-seven.
It looked like on the plat, I'm going to say most of them were fifty by one hundred and ten foot. And they varied a little bit, certainly some were bigger, maybe in narrower at the street, but wider, at least they were fifty-foot at the building line. And I assume that was at the twenty-five or fifteen-foot, however it was designed. But if you did that, had a twenty-foot setback with a fifty by one hundred and ten foot lot, you had a three thousand square foot buildable space on that lot with the five-foot setbacks on the sides, fifteen on the rear, and twenty on the front. So you've got three thousand square foot available and twelve hundred foot minimum, and you've got a garage to add in there. But if it went to twenty-five foot, it's only twenty-eight hundred square feet. So it would seem like you still have plenty of lot to build the house on. You just have five more feet of driveway. Five more feet of safety, five more feet of place for the kids to play in and drive. And, oh, it adds five more feet of cost, but, you know, you've got more lots in there as a concession. That's just, I don't know, that's how I see that.
So what are you asking the applicant for? What are you asking the applicant for?
Well, I think I asked for twenty-five and I heard you say twenty. That's, you said twenty and I asked for twenty-five.
Is that acceptable? As a condition, if we condition that as a comment, is that?
It, yeah, twenty, twenty-foot all the way through.
Okay.
And the twenty-foot from the edge of the right-of-way, is that right? That's the way I read it.
Yes.
And the right-of-way goes out to the fifty or sixty feet, so it-
You're going to get the-
Your, or somebody's argument with me might be, hey, the driveway is actually longer than a fifteen feet because some of it goes over the right-of-way. And I recognize that.
Correct.
Especially where there's not a sidewalk.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. So are you satisfied with the director's comment regarding the buffer and the application of code? Do you have any other comments that you'd like to ask for?
I'll just say that Mr. Grummer said he's going to, we don't need to have any kind of, the code applies regardless.
I would make sure there's nothing else that satisfies us. And then as far as the twenty-seven foot, Trace, my recommendation is, you know, we let the city engineer do it. I like the narrow. But I'm just, I'm just telling you because I like to keep speed down.
If you don't mind me jumping in here a bit. So also something else to note, you're talking about rear setbacks. So in a small lot by conditional use, if it's approved, the rear setback when it, when it abuts open space is actually can be reduced to seven. So, you know, in that way, you're talking about, there still is more buildable space even in that front. So it's typically fifteen, but if they, if they abut an open space, which the vast majority of these do, their rear setback can go down to seven if they, if they so choose, if it's approved.
The reason I'm asking this, Tracy, for you is like, you know, if you want fifty, if you want seventy there on Stony Heights there for lots one through six or seven, I mean, I can look at this and so can rule. That can be shifted up to provide it. If so, if not, then code applies. That's why I'm asking. So if you're happy with code, we don't need to make a condition in a motion unless you want something different.
No, put twenty-foot in there. And whatever the code calls out on that southern street.
No additional comments. So the only, so we make the motion, which I would encourage you to do so, the thing that you had asked, the condition is that for the twenty-foot setback, and leave it fifteen as proposed.
And I think I read, I don't see it in the staff recommendation on this sheet that I'm looking at, but I thought I read online perhaps that staff had also recommended additional bike trail connections. And I haven't heard that in this meeting.
I'm sorry, that's a good point. Yes, sir. And we did request additional connections to prevent lengthy, on the, for mid-block crossings. So I believe there is a recommendation somewhere, possibly around the lot one thirty-nine and two twelve between Stony Pass and Stony, Stony Valley, to provide better crossing across that block. And then an additional connection somewhere between maybe lot one seventeen and lot one eighteen, which would connect across Stony Mountain Drive. And that would almost provide a straight crossing to get from the western side of the subdivision to Stony Valley and more of a direct line on the, on the, on the pathway versus having to weave. And those are just recommendations from staff, as well as connection in the northeast corner. I believe that was more along the lines of lot one eighty-four and one eighty-five having a connection there to the pathway that leads to the east into Mammell.
You can find, you'll find those in our, in the preliminary plat staff report under the city planning. That's, staff recommends more mid-block crossings for appropriate trail connections. One seventeen, one thirty-nine, two twelve, two thirty-one, two thirty-two, one eighty-five.
And that's where I'd seen as well, the removal of the lots two forty-one, two forty-two.
Correct. So being that that's our staff report, that's staff recommendation, so.
The motion will be with staff recommendations to accept that. And then the only other recommendation would be, if I understand, Mr. Gil, we get through his concerns, it would be the change from fifteen to twenty on front setback. Any other comments or questions, Tracey?
So are you requesting adding, essentially on staff recommendation, add a number five for all setbacks to, front setbacks to be twenty feet?
And staff will verify step-down requirements and make sure all lots comply.
No further comments or questions. Chair will entertain a motion. This is due pass to council.
On the conditional use.
On the conditional use, item one.
I'll make the motion since I made the code motion. I make a motion to pass as presented with staff comments, including the additional item of the twenty-foot setbacks, the bike trails and the items listed from the subcommittee.
Do we have, do we have, thank you, sir. Do we have a second?
Second.
Hearing a second, we'll now vote on the item of the S U B twenty-four dash one, C U C twenty-four one, Stony Mountain subdivision for the proposed conditional use permit. All those in favor of the conditional use permit signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no. The proposed conditional use permit is approved. We will now hear the proposed preliminary plat.
So there's really not much more addition, the, which is a good reason to have the discussion all together.
The same comment would carry, Tracy.
No additional, so the recommendations, again, staff recommends, and this being, this stays with the commission. So this would be a recommendation for approval conditioned upon staff, planning commissioner, and city engineer comments.
Very good. Any other discussion?
Oh, I have a question, sorry.
Yes, sir, Andrew.
Do we need to be explicit that its preliminary plat's approval is contingent on the master street plan amendment?
Yes, sir. Well, the-
No.
I know practically speaking, that's what it is, but just-
Well, so this, technically, yes, sir, that's right. So, and it would be contingency. I thought that we had that in the comments.
It probably did.
But if not-
You're right, because it stays with commission. So we have to make that, the motion needs to be contingent upon the approval of the master street plan, which goes to council, as recommended. Well, we've not heard it yet, assuming that it's due pass.
That's correct. So if the, if the master street plan is, if it's not approved, then the street layout doesn't, cannot apply. And then also, keep in mind, on the, this is also conditioned upon county comments being satisfied as well, since it does have a element of county review. And the county comments that came in, their comments were that they show Tracks Road is a private road and cannot be used as subdivision ingress and ingress point. So that has to be gated off, as I mentioned earlier. The intent to provide secondary access for fire and emergency services from Tracks Road and easement may need to be obtained from the property owners along Tracks Road. So if that's necessary, and that would be up to fire vehicles, but again, we have two means of ingress egress out of Mammell. An easement may be needed for the dash turnaround shown at the end of Given Drive. And I believe they've accommodated that on the plat now. It's been taken care of. And adjacent property owners outside the proposed annexed area need to be notified. Planning Commission meeting, which they have been, based on the notification mailouts that happened.
Thank you. So you're just in your motion, make it contingent upon staff and commissioner comments and?
City engineer and county, yes, sir.
Yeah, the county comments, and I think we've covered there. Chair will entertain a motion for the, to vote for the proposed preliminary plat.
All right, I'll do my best.
That's all we ask, ma'am.
I'll make a motion for recommend approval contingent for, hold on, for the proposed preliminary plat. Recommend approval contingent on further staff, commissioner, public comments, annexation into the city of Mammell, the county planning comments and city planning comments.
Yeah, it's got to be contingent on the master plan approval.
And the master plan approval.
Correct. I hear a second.
Second.
Hearing a first and second, we'll now vote for the proposed preliminary plat on S U B twenty-four dash one, C U C twenty-four dash one.
Could I, sorry, just clarify one point. Ms. Baron, I think I heard you say contingent on public comments.
On the county planning comments here?
You, you did mention, I heard, public comment as well.
Oh, county, it should just be county.
County planning.
Would you still move, amend your motion on that to, for county instead of public?
Yes, sir.
Very good. So I hear a second on amended.
Second.
Thank you. So now we will vote on the proposed preliminary plat as presented for S U B twenty-four dash one, C U C twenty-four dash one for the Stony Mountain subdivision. All those in favor of the proposed preliminary plat signify by saying yes. Yes. All those opposed, no. Yes, all those opposed, no, the proposed preliminary plat for Stony Mountain subdivision is approved. Now, uh, as the, uh, agenda is amended, we will now hear on the master street plan, uh, amendment, M S P twenty-four dash one. Mr. Grummer, or that's a, uh, Jason, Jason, you're gonna handle this, Mr. Line, or whichever one.
Actually, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, since I, I had communications with the public, I kinda wanted to introduce this one a little bit.
Sure.
Before Jason jumped in there, um, so, um, and actually, Jason, never mind, uh, you were prepared to introduce this thing, when you're done, just turn it over to me, and I'm, then I'll, I'll discuss, uh, public comments.
Miss Line, continue, sir.
All right, so, uh, we've, we've discussed this pretty much already, um, basically, as you see in the, the note that was in there, we are seeking on the master plan, it's of multiple portions, uh, downgrade Diamond Point Drive from a collector to residential from west of Emerald Drive. Uh, this allows the traffic count data, and also all the current file of plats, all showing fifty-foot right-of-way. If you were to make, if it were, to remain a collector and the city wanted to build to a collector standard and take the sixty-foot right-of-way that you're think, you would need ten foot of, ten foot of additional right-of-way, so five foot off each side, um, from each residential owner there. Two, remove the proposed collector that extends west from Diamond Point Drive through Track B, again, fifty-foot, twenty-seven-foot road. Add a new proposed collector running from Rizland Drive on the south to a new alignment via the proposed Stony Mountain Drive to Tracks Road and terminating into Settlement Road, obviously that would require quite a bit of upgrades. Add a new proposed, staff also proposes adding a new collector and arterial connections midway between highway three sixty-five and the railroad track, with the arterial moving northeast towards roughly the Orbit Lane area and terminating at the intersection with highway three sixty-five north, and a collector running east-west from Bradley Road to Settlement Road, uh, this would be in line with potential future growth in the area. So, uh, you have the staff report in front of you, um, I'm gonna, there are some public comments, I'm gonna let Scott talk about that, he spoke to numerous residents in that area, um, and he would be able to fill you in better, uh, in the staff analysis, of course, you've already seen the, the Diamond Point, uh, traffic counts, and, uh, the other stuff, uh, master street plan as it is right now. Uh, note, this east-west currently also goes through the previously approved Pinnacle Heights, which obviously has different, has a different layout. The proposed, uh, you see, Diamond Point is removed as a collector and downgraded to a residential and residential norma to here until it hits Stony Mountain. Uh, the two thousand four master street plan, as you see, uh, in this area, um, nothing was there, uh, well, yeah, those were just all just black roads. Two thousand six proposed is where you start seeing the building of Diamond Point all the way around to its terminus, uh, Park Ridge. Uh, also settlement, you know, this settlement and this Rizland proposed. Two thousand eight, uh, Metro Plan, I believe this is, this was approved, and at this point, you do see Diamond Point in its current layout, Rizland current layout. Okay, um, here's actually what, uh, Chairman Johnson was talking about earlier, here are, here's actually your traffic count points that we described earlier.
Thanks, I thought it was.
Sorry about that, it was a little late.
Yeah, I was digging on the board.
Um, the traffic counts, uh, for you to look at as you go, Scott's gone, and then this is a, a traffic count on Rizland Drive, um, in Traveler, Traveler Lane, this was done, um, with Pinnacle Heights, back in August of twenty twenty-one, so. Uh, with that said, uh, I'll answer any questions you may have, uh, otherwise I'll turn over the microphone to Scott, and he can discuss the, uh, public comments that he received, uh, as well as we have two citizen public comments.
So thank you, Jason, um, first of all, I, I'd like to thank, um, Mr. and Mrs. Mooney who's here tonight, and I'd like to, I hope they get up here and share a little bit about, um, the conversations that we've had, um, and then also Mr. Perkins, uh, who's part of the family that, um, has ownership within what's called the, the Perkins, uh, Family Park, that is along track, right off Tracks Road on the northern side of the railroad tracks. And there's a deep history about that, and I hope maybe you can share a little bit about that when you get up here and speak. I will say that, um, we modified our original proposal on the master street plan based on the conversations that we had. We did have a connection, there's an at-grade railroad crossing at Tracks Road that actually crosses over, and it feeds into not only the Perkins Family Park, but also some, uh, some other parcels that are parceled out close to that, none of those have connection to three sixty-five. So, we saw that as an ability in order to, um, further disperse traffic that may be growing in here to get a more faster direct route, um, from Tracks Road up to three sixty-five, but in those conversations, I've learned that there's a deep heritage in it, and there's a lot of history in there that actually the, uh, the city may wanna take into consideration and helping to preserve, and, uh, and we certainly don't wanna impact any of those, uh, so I wanted that on the record, that future decisions that are made in any future developments that happen in that area should be sensitive to those needs and, and the residents that live up there, um, 'cause there is a deep history. You will see that we took that connection from Tracks up to, um, that proposed con, uh, collector that runs east-west between three sixty-five and the railroad. Based on the Stone Canyon development that, uh, is, uh, currently being developed, uh, to the east of that, that will disperse out, uh, from the old, old Maumell Highway location, um, and then, uh, that's, and then there's an access to three sixty-five, between there and Settlement Road, there's really no other access, uh, to access three sixty-five, so as you develop further out, if you collect traffic, then the traffic has to collect and go to Settlement, or it has to collect and go, um, uh, eastward, which would likely be Bradley Road. And our, our thoughts are that that may be a little bit too much traffic, and you would wanna disperse that with something in the center, whether if it's a collector or an arterial. We initially proposed an arterial, uh, to follow a road that was called, uh, Orbit's Lane, but one thing in the conversations that I learned is that Orbit's Lane has a deep history and it isn't exactly what it seems, it looks like it's a seventy-foot right-of-way, but it's a, a private easement, and it was actually a trail that was utilized by the residents of the area in order to access the railroad tracks over there at the Perkins Family Park. So, um, and I'll, I'll let, uh, Mr. Uh, Mr. Mooney, uh, expand on that. We're not, we're not necessarily proposing utilizing Orbit's Lane, um, uh, we feel that there may be something there that needs further study and understanding. But we also know that somewhere in this location is the midpoint, and there, that should be considered upon future developers that ever want to try to access three sixty-five, um, they had proposed, um, the Rocky Bottom road, but unfortunately, that connection, uh, is not a very good connection, um, it has blind spots on hills and curves, um, and it wouldn't necessarily be safe, the, the other, somewhere in that area lower might be better, but again, looking at any connection in this area would be impactful to the residents that live there. So, this is just a proposed on the master street plan, so as other, as new development happens in the future, these are things that are discussed, and they have to come with proposals, but then also those developers have to meet with the residents and have that process set up in which, um, to determine what works best. Uh, so at this point, um, the connection we're making is just saying the city and the county agrees with this as well, that, um, there's likely going to be a, a need for a third main point onto three sixty-five, um, of course, and for the record, any proposal in the future, again, would require significant, um, looking into the history of that area and make sure there's, uh, no impacts.
Very good. Uh, would you have one comment card, you said that you would want to defer your comments to the master plan, so we'd give you an opportunity to speak should you, uh, Mr. Mooney? If you would introduce yourself and name and address for the record.
Yeah, so Terry Moon, I reside at eleven hundred Moon Valley Road, considered Maumell slash North Little Rock, we don't know what we are. Claim us till now, but anyway, my concern is, what Scott had just mentioned about, uh, Tracks Road, for that proposed, for plan, for the backup plan, Plan B, I'll call it, um, dealing with the Perkins Park, which is a family heirloom that's been around for generations, and it's had cemetery plots that's attached to that cemetery, and they have a, I'm not on the, the boarding committee for the Perkins Park, one of the guys supposed to be here tonight, but I see him show up, so, he can speak more about that, but my main concern is, where he's talking about this connection from Tracks Road to take this collector's road if need be, in the future, that comes from Tracks Road over to Orbit. And everybody keeps seeing on this map, which is, I'll show you here, it keeps showing all the roads. All the roads from, I've been here thirty, thirty-five years, my wife, she's been living them all her life, and, and that plot of land was like grandmother, grandfather from generations, okay? And, uh, that was, I call it a pig trail slash cow trail, that someone said, hey, you could use it to get to your house because your road flooded out. And over the years, over the fifty or sixty years, it's just been a trail, finally they end up putting a sign that said Orbit. Now, the way it does, Orbit may goes about, I would say maybe two hundred, two hundred yards, and it deads in it. Then, the rest of that is my front yard. So if you wanna come out and look at it, which Scott did, that's my front yard that they're considering crossing in my front yard, and the reason for that is, I brought my property for, most of all, for, I would say for security, for one thing, and for privacy. And by them considering doing that, that's gonna take away both, which, you know, I know some things I can't control, but, um, as, as they say in real estate, everything is negotiable, but for me, or my wife, we would rather not even see it. But like I was telling Scott, this other backup plan, as it showed on the map, it's Rocky Bottom, which is a, it's a, it's a road, and it has an easement that's drawn into the maps, and I showed it to Scott, and I don't know why everybody keep talking about this road is, uh, a danger zone. It's about twenty, twenty to twenty-five people been living on that road for the last, I would say fifty, sixty years, and I can't recall of any deaths that's been probably maybe in the last ten years, I would say probably might have been one or two accidents that might have occurred, and it wasn't from pulling out, it was really, 'cause it's a hill, when you come out, it's a hill there. And a lot of times when somebody stop, or, and that person is speeding, it accidentally runs into the back of, it causes that. But like I was telling Scott, where they come out at Rocky Bottom, I have access to land, as I was telling about, another thirty to forty feet. And if they came over another forty to fifty feet, from where that Rocky Bottom is, come over to the right, that would put them about middle ways of that highway, and that would take away some of that so-called danger that everybody's talking about. And I was willing to give up that space for it if need be, because I look at it like, why, uh, for my yard space that they talking about taking from me and my family, when there's access to that same property, my property land, and I'm saying, hey, this is the road that's been here for years, and there's an easement for there, and, uh, I believe my wife has a cousin that purchased land about three, four years ago, that was part of that, uh, that was part of the tracks they talking about crossing over to that path to get to three sixty-five? Well, at the time, when he purchased his land, he was trying to use that same trail to connect, but once they end up, we had to, like, he had to get a lawyer in and go to court about it, and once he made his purchase, and I showed plans that it actually showed that that Rocky Bottom was an easement for that property that he got that forty-acre track on, 'cause every piece of land you buy, you gotta have some kind of access to get to it. And that's what that access was for there, and still, and that's what he, he, once he purchased the land, he had to go ahead and develop that other, maybe two hundred fifty feet for development.
Are you aware, is easement, is, is any of this in Mackey, do you know?
I'm not aware if it's in Mackey, but, um, I would, and based on, uh, the conversations that we've had, I have no problem with moving that green line from Orbit to Rocky Bottom and allowing the engineers and developers in the future work that out, if it, and, 'cause R D O T is gonna have to approve any connection onto three sixty-five, so they would look at it, evaluate it, and determine whether or not if the modifications that you're suggesting over there would work, and I'm fine with letting them work that out and not even have Orbit's on the, on the table right now, which I'm fine with doing that.
Because it's already showing up, they just surveyed about, I'd say maybe a year ago, well, it's been a year about, I would say, yeah, about a year ago, they surveyed it, and when they surveyed, they saw like it's a thirty-foot easement there already, and if Scott was telling me they need another thirty to forty, I have control then, if they need it, hey, I have access, and I told him, I don't have an issue with it, yeah.
Well, you'd work that out with the developer.
Yeah.
You would be very involved with that decision.
And that'd be many years away, I'm, I'm assuming, I don't see any activity going on over there right now, and it's gonna be, uh, there's gonna have to be utility improvements in order for stuff to move that way anyway.
The reason, I, that, when I asked, uh, to, to Mr. Grummer about Mackey order, that is a longstanding Plaski County, I don't know, instrument, maybe that's a better way to say it, that designates, uh, a county right-of-way that was dedicated. So, sometimes that pops up in these rural areas, so I, I don't know how, so this appears to be a functioning road for quite some time.
How long?
There's a long list of those roads in that order that can be referenced, and you'd see the Plaski County, uh, I guess that'd be Public Works Director or Planning.
And they actually did, I was, Orbit, Orbit Lane is listed as a private drive.
So that Mackey, you was talking about, how old is that, how far do that goes back?
I think it's fifties.
In the fifties?
But I can, can confirm this is a private drive, it's not public.
Good, that's why, that's why I asked.
Okay, all right, that's my only concern, and, and like I said, if anything is mentioned that I need to be aware of, and I'm willing to work with, and whatever it takes to get it resolved, and help out, hey.
Well, I look forward to working with you and your family in the future, 'cause there's, it, it, it's amazing, he hasn't spoken about the history, but, uh, back in the nineteen hundreds, how this land was utilized, and how, uh, families, uh, utilized the railroad there in order to access Little Rock, so it's really interesting.
Thank you for your tickets and your comments this evening, we appreciate, we appreciate your time, it was a long meeting, too. Ms. Katrina, would you like to speak? Okay, good, we'll take down your comment, so, uh, any other commissioner comments regarding the, uh, master plan, which is, we're now calling it one A, uh, if you will, uh, for, uh, the master street plan amendment? This is due pass recommendation, by the way.
So if I understand with Scott, then, um, I think staff's gonna recommend removing the arterial for now.
No, 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 uh, moving, moving it from Orbit, we're shifting it to Rocky Bottom.
Yeah, we, you can have that latitude as it goes to council. As far as I'm concerned, we'll see if the others agree. Seeing no further discussion, the chair will entertain a motion. We gotta break dice sometime.
Are we saying, is this, uh, make, make a, a motion that we accept the master plan, uh, as written, except that we would move the arterial, uh, Orbit to Rocky Bottom?
Correct, this is, incorporate staff comments.
And that is a, and that is a due pass?
Yeah, it's due pass recommendation, it will go on to city council, so it doesn't stay here. So we'll, but would, they have to have due pass recommendations for them to hear it.
Recommend due pass recommendation.
Very good, I hear a second.
Second.
Very good, hearing a first and second, we'll now take a vote for the proposed amendment to the master street plan, uh, all those for, uh, signify saying yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All those against, no, the motion passes for the master street plan amendment. Now, came back to our agenda item, under old business is item number two, is the C I U twenty-three dash three, the P C D code amendment update, Mr. Grummer. So I list proposed code amendment to section ninety, for those in the audience, ninety-four, four forty-six, four forty-nine, adding residential use as a conditional use, P C D zone. Uh, this was referred back to planning commission, uh, from, from city, from city council, um, and really asking for a little bit more definition, and, uh, staff has been working through that, so.
And Commissioner, if you don't mind, the stapled copy is the amended version.
Somewhere up here.
Um, that I provided to everybody at the start of the meeting, uh, we were working on this till about five forty-five, so that'll be the copy that's shown on the screen, um, and what we'll be using, um, if it passes to the council.
All right, so, um, uh, as, uh, Chairman Johnson mentioned, this did go to, uh, this was previously approved and went to city council, and city council, uh, recommended it come back for further review. Um, we did make some modifications from your previously approved, uh, and since what was received in your packet after discussion further with city attorney, and uh, as well as, uh, the memo that city attorney, uh, provided for city council, uh, this past meeting, um, that, uh, made suggestions if they wanted additional criteria that they could use in making a decision, both planning commission and city council, uh, after reviewing that, I realized that that would provide, I believe, some solution to some of the concerns over being able to have the authority to deny something or approve something based on the criteria. So we did add that, um, in, um, as a. So we did add that, um, in, um, as a, as a recommendation, if you'd like to add it in. So, I'll just kinda go through this, um, and I do, uh, do you have the?
I've got a question for you, sir, and so, at the subcommittee, this was provided as informational only to council at their last meeting for discussion, or how, how was it disseminated to council for input?
Well, no, it was, it was, uh, it was on first reading as an ordinance, and...
Actually, you got the second reading.
I'm sorry, it did get the second reading, and at second reading, they, um, they recommend to send it back based on concerns of, um, the wording, they wanted more specific limitations on how the residential can be incorporated into the PCD.
Okay. Thank you.
So, uh, the main change that you have is on the, starts on the second page. So let me go, uh, go down, actually, um, start on page two, under section two, ninety-four dash four four eight, um, A Industrial Uses, uh, there was a modification that needed to be made in there. Um, there, it stated, uh, in the red, in your new one that we provided to you, uh, today, it says, "On the west side of Mammell Boulevard, on the west side of the Boulevard, industrial uses shall be limited." And this was something that Commissioner Fisher, before he, uh, left, made comments on, and I thought it was addressed, but it hadn't been. Basically, uh, we're stating that industrial uses in the PCD zone shall not exceed twenty-five percent of the combined gross area of other commercial residential uses in the PCD period anywhere in the city, um, except in the industrial park where there's industrial uses already allowed by right. In those areas, if it's zone PCD, then it states, "There shall be no percentage restriction imposed in PCD," uh, and that is east of Mammell Boulevard, north of Carnahan Drive, and south of Union Pacific Railroad, and that delineates the industrial park. So I just wanted to clarify, that is a modification from what you received in your packets, we, we, we fixed that.
So we're not gonna tie that to zoning, we're gonna tie that to an area of town?
Correct.
Okay.
So now you go down to, uh, C, Residential Uses Suggested, so, um, all the, all the area that is, um, that has been stricken was previously recommended, and we've taken that out, we've reworded it. That wording was more meant to suggest that, uh, commercial is your primary use and residential is your secondary, leaving it generalized so that the Planning Commission City Council can make decisions based on what they feel that the, um, overall, uh, intent for what the Mammell Ford and the, and the city is wanting in the area. We took that out, and we added, um, the language, uh, the R-two and R-three districts, um, residential uses must comply with maximum coverage provisions in section ninety-four dash four four nine two. When deciding whether to grant a conditional use permit for residential use in PCD, the Planning Commission and City Council shall also consider the densities designated by the land use plan, uh, the densities of surrounding development, the densities allowed under the various zoning districts, the urban development goals and other policies of the city, the topography and character of the natural environment, and the impact of a given density on a specific site and adjacent properties. So here, you're provided criteria by which you can say if this has an impact on adjacent properties, or if there's any, um, urban development goals or densities, uh, is way too much higher than the surrounding densities, then you can have the argument to deny the application or request changes. But then we go further into, as we move on down, so you move on through, um, the Development Standards Conditions Review Guidelines for PRD and PCD, that's at the bottom of page two. We added that to show that these conditions do apply to both, um, both zones. Go to A, um, generally, uh, that was, uh, of course, crossed out and renamed, or rewritten, and I want to thank the, uh, city attorney for helping with the language on this. And this is where, um, some of the, this is where the change from what we provided in the packet starts to get a little bit more, um, involved. So I'm just gonna go, go through and read this and describe it as we move along. So, um, I'm just gonna read it, "The Planning Commission shall consider the proposed planned unit development in light of the intent and purpose of the district as described in ninety-four four four one and ninety-four four four three PRD, or ninety-four four four six and PCD. The Planning Commission shall determine that specific development features, including project density, building locations, common usable open space, shall be combined in such a way as to further the health, safety, amenity, welfare, and cultural enrichment of the city. Planning Commission shall also apply the same general review guidelines as those utilized for zoning and subdivision applications in chapters seventy and ninety-four respectively." And finally, "The Planning Commission shall apply the standards and review guidelines set forth in this section in addition to the following criteria," and this is where it adds in from the memo that city account, and city attorney provided to city council, uh, the criteria being the compatibility between the proposed development and surrounding areas so as to preserve and enhance the neighborhood, the urban development goals and other policies of the city, the need for the proposed development, the effect of the proposed development on the future development of the area. And I'll point that out, uh, you could use, for instance, uh, the, what came across city council on the approval of take five, there was some controversy whether or not if take five will change at the, that was approved by Planning Commission and just got approved by city council, um, that it may have an impact to the surrounding area based on the type of use it is for other uses that may come in. Well, this could have been a line that could have argued the denial of that, saying that we feel like this, that would create a reduction in the value of the property around that may limit future development. So that kinda opens that up. The effect of the, let's see, uh, that the land surrounding the proposed development can be planned in coordination with the proposed development. I think this one's a good one, because what we want in a PCD is continuity, uh, that's gonna create the walkability and connections to adjoining properties. If you just parcelize things and you, a lot of times when you see large tracks, for instance, Track D, they could end up trying to sell a portion of that to build a fast food restaurant, but then, and then just keep partiallying, there's no really connectivity or usage. This would say, what you're doing on this has to have a plan to connect and work, uh, universally with everything around it. That the existing proposed streets are suitable and adequate to carry anticipated traffic within the proposed development and in the vicinity of the proposed development. I believe that, uh, that addresses Mr. Councilmember Mosley's concerns over how, um, what, if you're adding in residential, how's that going to impact the traffic? Now, um, speaking to, uh, Mr. Covington with Metro Plan, he did say that, uh, he's unaware of any decisions that are made that, and I'm sorry if I'm carrying on on this.
That's okay, it was an early date for me, I'm clowned through, so you have to just excuse my tiredness.
Most, most decisions are not made about traffic that, about traffic impacts far away from the proposed site, and those are hard to distinguish, um, it's normally around the general, generalized location. That existing proposed utility services are adequate for the proposed development, and that the proposed, proposed development creates a desirable and stable environment, and that the proposed development makes it possible for the creation of a creative, innovative, and efficient use of property. I think those are, and that's new, I hope it's, uh, you feel the same as far as effectiveness. Now, uh, here's where some other changes came in, uh, on, under number two, density and intensity, when you go through, some of this language was not in the original ordinance that, or recommendation, uh, just because it, nothing was changed, it was added in here just so that you see, this is how it is in black, in the ordinance that, uh, under PCD provides the residential density guidelines. When you move down to two, um, the city, city attorney made a lot of the recommendations and discussions concerning this, lot coverage versus maximum coverage, because when we're talking about the differences between commercial and residential, we kinda wanna allow for what the, what, what our proposed lot coverages are, um, and they may vary. And then, uh, when you read through that, uh, the, the Planning Commission shall review specific proposed lot coverages which generally correspond to the guidelines for lot coverage in the respective residential office, commercial, or industrial district, which most depicts the development scheme. "When considering a mixture of residential and commercial, light, industrial, and PCD, the following specific guidelines also apply." I had initially, on these guidelines, had, had put percentages in there recommending differences between external lot coverage and internal lot coverage, and realized, as we discussed through it, trying to figure out, okay, well, what does this mean when you have sixty percent of this, thirty percent of that, and if they're combined, and what constitutes an internal versus an external, and it got a little bit convoluted. But then we also started talking about, if you place too much of a restriction, then you could end up restricting any proposals coming, which gives you the ability to look at something and say, you know what, maybe you're fifty percent there, you need to get, you need to go a little further. So there's got, there's criteria there that gives you the ability to say, no, we want you to take it back and work on a little bit more, but we like the fact that you're coming with opportunities for development of this land, otherwise you could shut out all development at all, you know? So with that, A changed from, and we took the sixty and thirty percent out, and we put ground floor lot coverage along for, uh, I'm sorry, A and B changed, uh, "Ground floor lot coverage along or fronting public or private streets abutting in the development shall be one hundred percent commercial or light industrial, with second and above floors allowing a mixture of uses as described in the section, um, and conditional uses thereof." So, when we say the, uh, abutting, uh, public and private streets abutting, so, again, imagine Track D, and you've got Commons Drive, you've got Audubon, you've got Club Manor, and you even have the private drive in between Kroger and Track D, those are all abutting, so we would consider that, that would need to be floor commercial all the way around that. So that provides commercial frontages to all those major roads, um, and that would have to be a hundred percent, but you could come above that floor with residential, commercial, industrial, whatever you want with that. And then, uh, the Planning Commission, uh, may recommend that city council waive this one hundred percent requirement for development due to specific characteristics unique to the property, so long as the development meets the remaining requirement guidelines and criteria. And the reason for that is, sometimes there are situations in which a hundred percent just will not work on, and they have to make the argument why, um, they're asking for something other than that one hundred percent. But again, that's why you leave the criteria broad, but you give many factors so that they can say, you know what, I don't feel like that you, you've really sold me on that, take it back and, and, uh, work on it more. And then, B, this is where we took the sixteen and thirty out, uh, residential density that development shall comply with density and intensity goals outlined in subsection ninety-four four four nine, um, for the residential density and a mixture of residential, commercial, light, industrial, and PCD. So ultimately, what we're, what we're saying here is that, um, we, we would rather say we want a hundred percent commercial in the areas that really are the major roadways, and then when it comes to the internal, if it's large or small, whatever's happening inside that development that you really can't see from the, from the street, we want that to be more of a discussion item among Planning Commission and City Council based on the Mammell Ford and the intent, as well as understanding that any plan that comes requires now, because of the changes approved by the Planning Commission, there has to be a community meeting in which the community is allowed to come out and give input on that. And the Planning Commission and City Council can make decisions based on that input as well. I think it's important that, uh, the PCD is done in a way that provides flexibility so that you can get that kind of input, but you're not static like a C-two or an R-one or R-three, because if this was Zone C-two, then if they comply with the ordinance, and they by right can build what's allowed in a C-two, but in a PCD, you're developing the regulation that becomes the ordinance that they have to comply to, so you get to discuss, and you can't, you're not always gonna agree, and that's how ordinance are produced, you take it, no, it's not right, take it back, work with it, until you get it to where you want it to be. So I just wanted to point that out. And, other than that, unless I've missed something, I'll allow the city attorney...
We moved drainage to the very end.
We did, that was, earlier in the ordinance, we just moved it to kinda clean it up, because the drain is, "Proposed development shall include onsite and downstream drainage to protect water courses." We do that anyway, but the location as, as it pertains to parking standards, perimeter treatment, we felt, uh, drainage was similar to that.
Okay, thank you.
So just to say, um, uh, the, uh, city council sent it back, um, to, to request some additional language to prevent, I think what they call token, commercial development in a PCD. They didn't want development plans that got snuck in under PCD mixed use, that just had a tiny bit of commercial and overwhelming amount of residential, so we...
Somebody said the one building?
So that's why it's back in front of them, and that's what we're trying to do with these amendments.
Okay.
Just one question.
That's okay.
I'll make a quick, the urban development goals, those are specific to Mammell, and it's a static document, or that too becomes a, a document that is periodically reviewed and updated annually, or, I was just curious, when we make that statement, so it's, it's truly a, a written document?
So, uh, I didn't list the name as, I mean, Mammell Ford was the written...
Is that what it is?
That was the written document that was approved, that was approved by resolution as a guide for the city, it's not regulation, it's a guide. So we utilize that as the urban development goes, um, but that's one of the things that actually, um, the mayor is working with Metro Plan and trying to bring forward, um, the opportunity for us to maybe do an update and look at things in which we can do, um, an update to that.
This, uh, we had an applicant way back, I think it was Brent, so, we started this based upon his application, correct?
It was something that we had planned on doing, it was in the Mammell Ford to do, and this facilitated that process, it was in...
Yeah, he launched it, yet he's been vacant on all these meetings, so I've taken these to, to his development.
As far as I know, but at the end of the day, regardless of whether that happens or not, I think it's imperative that we look at this, because, uh, there's other PCD all over the city, and with the growth out to the third interchange, there's potential that this could be used there to help facilitate development, so it's just a matter of helping us grow in the areas we need to grow.
Are you getting further discussion for Commissioner's stuff? Chair unattended motion, seeing none, Chair one unattended motion.
I make a motion to do pass, uh, PCD Code Amendment Update pending city council and staff and commissioner comments.
Thank you, very well done. I hear a second. Very good, hearing the first and second, we'll now vote on the proposed code amendment. The code amendment for section ninety-four one oh one C-two for the code amendment update to section same, 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 ninety-four one oh C-two for site plan review. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
All those opposed say no. It is approved for the proposed code amendment on ninety-four one oh C, one oh one C-two. We, uh, had amendment for number one, ended up being moved over to one A for Old Business, and, uh, item number two, under New Business, which is the hillside.
Uh, we have number three under Old Business.
Where, where we at?
You, you got, you mixed up two and three.
I did. Okay, thank you, I need to make a change then, so, yeah, I, I, somebody should, I am a little tired, I'll be honest with you, so, uh, I, I, so I apologize about that, that was the PCD code amendment. Now we're gonna hear, which is much more simple, straightforward, uh, item number three for the code amendment update, so if you would just make that correction in a minute, get your quick reflection, please.
Uh, so, uh, Scott has the novel, I will make this the little chart book here. So ninety-four one oh one C-two, uh, this pertains to site plan, uh, review post approval. Unfortunately, we've had, typically, they have twenty-four months to apply for a building permit, and apply, that's, that's the key word. Uh, we have a couple of projects where they've applied for a building permit, but it's, then it's kinda sat there. Um, we've reviewed some, no fees paid, and it just sits there, and sits there, and sits there. What we propose here is to move the site plan review post approval to be in line with plaits, preliminary plaits, which is twelve months, and if they, for whatever reason, they don't, they can't get something done in twelve months, they can come to the Planning Commission for up to two one-year extensions, and that's where this, and we're basically adding, they need to apply for and have approval of their site plan at that point. Um, so that's the, the easy version of it, uh, more or less just, we're aligning the site plan post approval with the preliminary plat post approval.
Everything is the same now. Discussion?
The one point is on the blue, of course, just keep in mind that, uh, that matches, that was the addition that matches the same thing, because... was the addition that matches the same thing because there's, the administrative review should follow the same approval process for the Planning Commission review. So we're just saying both of those have the same conditions.
Very good. Thank you. Question from commissioners? Chair unattended motion.
I'll make a motion for a do-pass recommendation to city council contingent on further staff, commission, and public comments to the CAU twenty-four dash one code amendment update, specifically modifying language regarding approved site plan expiration timelines.
Very good. Do you hear a second?
Second.
Here the first and second. We'll take action on a vote for proposed code amendment. This is in section ninety-four one oh one C-two, correct one. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Motion carries for proposed code amendment in ninety-four one oh one C-two. Now, that master street plan was moved to old business and the hillside putting course conditional use permit staff is requesting a deferral to March. And that's fine, the applicant's here. So still working through things, I guess.
No, the, I'm sorry, the reason is that I don't think it fits as a health educational facility.
Yeah, I remember now.
And so we're proposing a code amendment to specifically allow for this external recreational facility.
What do we do with the one that came through the first time? Where do we put it at here?
It was health educational facility.
Oh, well, it's, we didn't have Andrew, though.
Right. But that was also because before my time, the, that jump zone that was approved in the industrial park also utilized the same thing. So we didn't have anything else in our code to, to, to place that in a category.
Throw, throw some others in there, too, if you think it needs it, Andrew. You know, it's right there. If you're going to the well, you better draw, you know, more than one bucket of water. Okay, so we got, so we'll close the public hearing, and then we got city council liaison reports, the first for February five, twenty twenty-four, is vice chair Winnick.
Sorry, point of order, do we need to, does it need to be a motion or vote on staff deferral?
You pull it down. We always decide this.
I'm sorry, yes, so there was, there was notifications that were done, so we're all requesting that we, we keep it on the agenda, but come back as old business once we bring on the, the recommended amendments for the, for the new category.
Do you want a motion to defer?
Uh, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Chair unattended motion to defer.
Make a motion to defer to March meeting.
Okay, so we got second, we got first and a second for deferment of the hillside putting course conditional use permit until the March meeting. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
All those no, carries for deferral for March meeting. So we'll close the public hearing, and then we'll hear city council liaison reports. Ms. Winnick was about out of the gate for February five, twenty twenty-four.
All right, there was a third reading of ordinance eleven oh three amending city code to provide a new land use category. After much discussion, it did pass six to two with one of those as an absent. There was a motion to postpone to an April meeting, but that motion was rescinded or failed. But at the end, it did pass. Third reading for ordinance eleven oh four amending the Ma-Mell land use plan in MAP. There was a motion to bring that to Arkansas Department of Transportation rep to the meeting. Motion failed, but it did, the, the third reading, there was a vote that did pass six to two to amend the Ma-Mell land use plan in MAP. Second reading was for the ordinance eleven ten amending code definition to amend the definition of family for the purposes of zoning regulations. And basically, that was an update in the terminology to reflect intellectual and other types of disabilities. Second reading of ordinance eleven eleven accepting and confirming the dedication of certain streets and drainage in the development known as Stone Canyon. Under new business, there was a resolution for twenty twenty-four dash two approving a preliminary development plan of lot one for take five oil change. The motion passed to delay action, six to one vote, and there was a request to seek role clarification in the, in the oversight of city council and approving the land use primarily for the type of development for that prime property. And I look to our city, Mr. City Lawyer, if there's anything I missed on that, but they're asking you to give additional guidance on decision-making capacity to approve.
The use was not right.
You're talking about the PUDs?
The.
The oil change.
Oil change.
The take five oil change.
Yes. It would have been as right in C-two or C-three, I think, but because it was a PUD. And the council members asked me, what are the guidelines to apply? How do we decide this? So I sent them what is currently ninety-four dash four four nine, although if these code amendments go through, there'll be some changes to that.
Thank you. That was it. Isn't that amazing?
Thank you. Mr. Gill for February twenty twenty-two four.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, you'll be happy to know that they had the third reading of ordinance eleven ten, which Mary just talked about. They had the third reading of ordinance one eleven eleven, which again, Mary just explained, and also resolution twenty twenty-four dash O-two, same story.
So no, no movement?
No, no. Well, the only other thing that actually I mentioned that came up is there was some discussion about metro, Metropolitan Transportation Plan twenty fifty, and that kind of has to do with planning. We talked about a trip generation design, which kind of seems like it plays around a little bit what we talked about tonight. And Scott, we're just going to have more information on that as it comes later, so that's kind of heads up. It'll come a little here, dog, more later.
Okay. For city council liaison reports, this is Commissioner Ramsey on March four and myself on March eighteen. I will say before we adjourn, I spoke with, Ms. Winnick had, she, we were talking beforehand about an item, and I, I requested, directed, sounds like a bad word. So I, I requested Andrew to help us work on putting a resolution together that we can support and get some momentum and get this Ma-Mell Ford plant updated or whatever they're, they're going to call it, so we can address some of these items. It's ten years, it's time. I mean, most master plans are in that. It's not too late, really. I mean, eight to ten, five's really, really good, very rarely done, but in that eight to ten is when you want to look at it, for sure.
And I can say that Mr. Covington said that, I believe, they are going to move forward with doing a planning study for the Ma-Mell, and that's kind of a precursor, that that's all the heavy lifting for doing a full plan. So we're going to get, and that can be done in about two to three months. So it looks like we'll be able to get something like that this year, and that's going to provide us kind of a foundation by which we can start public communication and conversation.
It seems like it's ten years old, though. Oh, okay. Okay, motion, I'll take, the chair unattended motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Yes, here's a second.
Second.
All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
All those no, motion carries, we are adjourned.